Okay. I think we are good to go, Paula. You did good on the live stream. Good job.
Thanks. Glad something's working.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Like I was saying before, it's true and remarkable that we are able to still come together and do the business of Warren County through social media and these electronic devices. And just wanted to make sure everybody is prepared that, of course, we know we just went through a little bit of winter weather, and I think that we're forecast to get it again on tomorrow. So we need to make sure that we're well aware of those issues because I think a lot of people are still dealing with power outages. And so, but hey, like I said before, the welcoming purposes according to our agenda, ladies and gentlemen, I see that Mr. Hayes' group is on here, but I'm gonna leave that to Mr. Jones to do that introduction. But I want to welcome all of these citizens that have decided to join us on our first board retreat of this year. And we're doing it, of course, on behalf of the citizens. Here's a chance for the board of commissioners to come together and have a basically an outlook on where the county is, where it's going, and what our desires, when I say our, that means all of us, all the citizens of Warren County. We've been dealing with a lot of different things here, of course, in 2020 and start of 2021 with COVID and things, but we are powering through. And Mr. Hayes' group is gonna help us to facilitate us in the things that we want to accomplish in our outlook and focus on where we should be and how we should progress. But before I move on with that, I would definitely give each commissioner an opportunity to make any type of comments that they want to start off with before I turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Chairman Davis, and I'll say good afternoon to the board of commissioners. I'm excited by the workshop we have for you this afternoon. As you know, this is our third time working on this annual look at our strategy and strategic plan for the county. And for me, it's one of the most important things that you all can do as a body. And so I think I've mentioned previously that the work that we've done in the prior two years, each year, we want to build on that going forward. And I think what you all will do this afternoon is the most substantial step that we've taken since I've been here to look at your strategic plan in a comprehensive way to lay out vision and strategies for the county going forward. So I'm excited that we have the Hayes group joining us today. And Mr. Hayes, who is not unfamiliar with the county here, and his partner, Mr. Parks, as well, both have an extensive background, and they're going to share that with you all. And again, I look forward to you all having some good discussion and interaction with each other this afternoon because that will serve as a guide for us here on the staff side to make sure we are working on the behalf of our residents here in Warren County. So thank you.
Wonderful. So I know, before we, or Ms. Baker, I know you said you was trying to get your, start your video there. Are you okay with us moving forward? Ms. Baker?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. I know you were saying that you was trying to get your video started. Are you okay?
I'm good. I'm good, yes.
All right. I think that we're still working on, I'm sorry.
If I could share just briefly. So Ms. Baker and Ms. Pierce and Mr. Kingsbury and Mr. Powell, we can hear you talking just fine, but if you, when you turn your cameras on, when you speak, everybody will see you, otherwise they'll just hear your voice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Pierce just joined us. Hello, Ms. Pierce.
Join you in just a second.
I think you see a muted.
I know, I was like muted. I was like talking and there's nothing happening. No, I'm like, I'm with you visually now. So.
There you go. All right. Wonderful. Wonderful. Like I said, Mr. Jones just said, I think we're still working on the technical difficulties that Mr. Pierce, excuse me, Mr. Powell is having, and hopefully he'll be able to join us in just a few. But with that said, it's okay with anybody else to have anything to add. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Hayes and let him begin.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Davis. And Hayes Group and our entire team has really, really enjoyed working with each of you as we assist you in putting together your strategic plan for the coming year. It's been fascinating work. We've learned a lot, and we look forward to going through this today. Charles, if I can have that first slide, please. We're gonna see how this works.
Wonderful.
And let's go to, let's go to, let's go to the second and the third one. Well, that one, yes. This is the agenda for today. We've already had the welcoming purpose. I'll tell you a little bit about who we are. We'll get some comments. I won't read all of these, but you can see it, and this is the more detailed agenda than what you have already. What you see in blue goes one, two, three, and four. These are the goals that we're suggesting that you focus on in the coming year. We'll talk about each one of those in detail as the day goes on. Charles, if you will, next slide, please. That's me. I guess in my younger day, but my hair was still white. Just, just for the record, I've been, my career, I've been a county manager, I've been a local county economic developer, ran the research triangle regional partnership from its inception, basically in 96 to 2016. I'm currently a fellow at ECU in the Economic Development Academy. Next slide. That's a brief overview. Dan, our senior strategist with the Hayes Group, worked at the Office of Outreach and Engagement at NC State. He was the Senior Director of Strategy and Innovation, Associate Director of the Industrial Extension Service. He's worked in over 25 counties and over 20 states. He's worked in corporations, both large and small, for-profit corporations in over 250 clubs. He has published Your Entrepreneur Edge. That's our senior strategist and Dan. And Dan and I will be the ones that are leading you through this facilitating that you're meeting today. Next slide. This is Jan Hayes. Jan is the, she owns more of the Hayes Group than anybody else. She currently serves on the North Carolina Rural Infrastructure Development Authority. That's the authority that does building reuse, CDBG grants, all that stuff through the Department of Commerce. She is the Vice Chair. She also serves on the Board of the North Carolina Community Foundation. That's a statewide board. She's on the Board of Trustees at Central Carolina Community College, and she is the former director of the United Way in Lee County for 10 years. She's also a former school board chair here in Lee County. And next slide, please. Julian Philpott is senior partner. Julian retired last December. He is, was for 31 years the chief lobbyist and general counsel for the Farm Bureau, and he currently serves on the North Carolina Debacle Trust Fund Commission. He is the Chair of the Central Carolina Community College Board, and he is on the North Carolina Association of Community College Trustees. He's co-chair of that legislative committee. And next slide, please. And Jennifer St. Clair is our senior partner in marketing. Her background is she was executive director of Downtown Sanford, Inc., and she was also Vice President of Marketing. And she is our senior partner in charge of marketing. That is the Hayes Group. And so we'll jump right into it. Do you give me the next slide? I'd ask each of you commissioners, you have handout number one, you were sent these before. Just take a few minutes and jot, jot down your, your ideas about why you chose to serve as a county commissioner, and what your hope for Warren County going forward is, and your commitment as a leader. And I'll just give you two or three minutes. Just jot down your thoughts on that, if you will, please. You know, one of the hard things in doing it this way, I can't see you, so I can't see when you were finished writing.
Okay. I'll try to hit me out with that, Mr. Hayes.
Okay.
I don't see my write button. What am I supposed to do here?
You were sent handout one, a piece of paper.
No, I'm talking about the computer.
Oh, well, I just saw you. You up there?
Yeah, but I'm trying to write.
No, I think, Ms. Baker, I think that he's talking about, he, we were sent these handouts here in your package, and I think he just gonna give us a chance to jot down our ideas real quick, and I guess he'll call on us to respond. Is that right, Mr. Hayes?
That is correct.
Yeah, but sometimes I'm on Zoom and they'll ask me to write and they can read it, and that's what I read it on the screen.
Oh, okay.
As I was trying to put it on the screen. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody has different Zooms, and that's what I was, I was trying to do. Okay. I'm fine. I'm fine.
You're just much more sophisticated than we are.
Absolutely.
All right, that's, that's enough time. So anybody, why, why did you choose to serve as a Warren County Commissioner?
Can I go first?
You can.
Okay. Well, when I looked at the mission statement, I pretty much agree with the statement. So my reason to serve as a county commissioner was to do whatever was necessary to help improve the quality of life for the citizens in Warren County, which not limited to, but just a few things in terms of like improving education, recreation, finding ways to create jobs, entrepreneurship, and to help try to facilitate or recruit or whatever is necessary to, to improve the basic services that's needed to have a healthy and efficient accounting. And when I say those services, I'm like, in terms of social service, law enforcement, infrastructure, things of that nature. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pierce, may I call on you? Why did you choose to be a county commissioner?
Sure. So I was asked, and in my thought process in deciding whether or not it was something that I wanted to do, I looked at the current board at the time, the composition of it, and it was all men. All of them were over the age of 40. None of them had kids in the public school system, and I was like, I'm not represented on this board, which means I'm not represented in this county. So I looked at that and I said, why not? Why not me? I'm from Warren County, have a deep passion for Warren County. So I felt with that background, and because again, I am very passionate about moving Warren County forward, that I would be a great asset to the board, and I decided to run.
Okay, so in other words, what they used to say, you looked around and saw a bunch of guys in ties and said you can improve.
It doesn't look like me. It needs a little bit more diversity on this board, so I fit that bill, and I decided to run.
And Commissioner Baker?
I don't fit in with Ms. Pierce. Well, first of all, I was asked and I refused, and I was asked and I refused, and I was asked and I, I was begged and I refused. And finally, I just thought about Warren County, thought about myself and how long I had lived here and how well I knew the county and how I knew the people. And finally, I just decided that, yes, it was something that I did want to do, and I decided that I would come on and join the board. And I thought about it as Mr., as Commissioner Hunt was speaking, I said, well, my goodness, what else can I improve? He has practically listed almost all of the services in Warren County. I don't think he mentioned safety, maybe the EMS and whatever, but the other things that he listed, I thought about the school system, I thought about industry, I thought about infrastructure, I thought about health that you need. If you don't have a good health, you can't do anything. So all of those things came to my mind, and I just felt that I did have, everybody looks at the board, I'm the oldest thing on here, but I still don't think I'm too old to function. So that didn't bother me at all. So I just thought that I had some, still had some good left in me that I could give Warren County, and I decided that I would do it.
Well, thank you for that. And Commissioner Powell?
Yes, sir. Yeah, to serve as a county leader, I wanted to be into it, and I wanted to help make this county grow. I wasn't at the time doing anything but studying what the county was all about, and I want to be a part of it. And in order to be a part of it, you have to be in it mostly. So I wanted to be in it and watch it grow and put input and errors in the counter that is necessary to make it grow.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Let's wrap up here with the, with the chair, if you will.
Yes, sir. Mine would be pretty much in line with everybody else's head, other than being a young mother, like Commissioner Pierce said, though. But basically, being a servant leader for my community, that's what it's all about. To say to you that I woke up one day and said I want to be a county commissioner, that would not be an accurate statement, but what be, would, would be accurate is that I've always had the ambition and the mindset to be a part of my community, and being a part of my community is being a servant to my community. And I think that's the reason why I decided to run, because it gave me the platform in order to basically play out my, my participation or how I felt like I would be a good servant to my community. So that's why I ran.
And thank you. So I think there's a thread that we can all see through there. Everybody is generally dedicated to the betterment of Warren County. Everybody wants to see it grow. Everybody wants to see the citizens improved, and everybody wants to give back. And everybody wants to be a servant leader, citizen leader. And so I think that's, that's a great thread. And I won't call on each of you for, for the next two questions. You made your notes there, but just hope I don't have to call on anybody. What is your hope? You know, not, not a long preamble, but what is your hope for Warren County going forward? And what is your commitment as a leader to make sure your hope becomes reality?
Well, if you don't mind, I like to, I went last, so I had a chairman this time, if you don't mind. Well, mine is basically to leave it better than I found it. And with that said, that is leaving a strong foundation for growth for Warren County. And the other part of that third question would be, which ties into that question, would be my comment is that to inspire people who are following right now to be leaders, to take it, the baton and move it forward. And it, of course, it'll manifest itself within itself, and having followers now, it will be great leaders in the future. And that's what I believe that we should be doing as leaders now, is making, making future leaders.
Right, right. Somebody else? What's your hope? For Warren County?
I'll go ahead and go. You know how they have for the band, it's like one band, one sound. That's what I want from Warren County. I want it to be a cohesive county moving forward. I don't want to be pulled in so many different directions so that it lessens our efforts. So my hope for Warren County is that everyone will get involved to try to make Warren County better than it has been, better than what it currently is. You know, anybody can see what's the negative in Warren County. I mean, it's just what it is. But if everyone gets together and then starts focusing on the positive or what can be. So as a commissioner, that's my hope for Warren County going forward, that everybody is on the same page to move the county forward and not focusing on the negative. As far as my commitment as a leader, I said to be as transparent as the law allows, and to provide as for an effect, efficient a government as possible. And also, I would also love for everyone to understand how county government works. As it says, we're the closest to the people. Have an understanding on how county government works so that you best understand some of our votes for how we act and do things on behalf of the county. So a better understanding as well. But that's my commitment as a leader, to be as transparent as possible.
Thank you. Somebody else?
I would like for Warren County to be healthy, safe, economically strong, and willing to work and do the best that we can to improve Warren County in any way that we can. And I would like for us to be, like Jennifer said, cooperative, willing to work, and not hesitant to do what it is that we can do to improve our county.
Okay.
And the second question, I would like to see that I can set an example as well as the rest of the board, so that our citizens can see that we are interested truly in Warren County, and we are willing to make it move forward, that they are see us striving and trying to do better and try to improve from work, the way that we are moving, and try to do the best that we can. And it's very important that she said we would like for all of the citizens to understand Warren County, how government works, and that's not just the county commissioners, it's every department. If we could let them know more about how county works, the financial part and all, because we still have citizens that are asking questions and making decisions that are showing us that they don't understand how the county actually operates.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
I agree with Ms. Baker, but, excuse me, my hope for Warren County is good leadership in the right direction. Okay, reach out to all the citizens of Warren County, economically, financially, and every aspect that we serve. And help them have a nice quality of life for the older as well as the young ones. And also put in and help the kids in the school. Okay, whatever needs to be done that we can assist with, we need to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hunt?
I think they basically said everything.
I would like to add a little bit, if I may. Mr. Powell triggered the senior citizen part, and this has nothing to do with me. I'm doing fine. But I just would like, I would like to see us, I don't, it's just coming to me, do more of our senior citizens, because as we know, that population is the growing population for the county. And I would like to say that we need to take into consideration that that is taking place.
Yes, ma'am. Said we will.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hunt, you have anything else to add?
Well, I think in summary, I just like to see us take a holistic approach to, and I know I'm oversimplifying it, but a holistic approach to improving the quality of life for everybody. So that would be kids all the way up to the seniors, and everything that we do should be focused from a holistic standpoint where we're not leaving any segment of the population out as far as trying to improve that, that quality of life.
Well, I appreciate all of you doing this, and it took a little, little bit of time, but I think it's important, and you can certainly see a thread that runs through here. All of you have obviously given these questions some serious thought. I don't know whether you lay in your bed at night thinking about that, those or not, but it's, but they're very thoughtful and very, very meaningful. And so it's, it's a thread. Everybody wants, wants the candidate to be better, and you have some, some specific ideas about things that need to be done. You have good, good hope for it, and you have a lot of commitment. So Dan is gonna talk to us now. Thank you for that. We've been taking notes on all of that. Dan will talk to us now on the need for strategy.
Thank you, Charles. There we go. Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'm sitting in Greensboro, waiting on a major ice storm, as I think you are too. So maybe we have a good window of time this afternoon to beat that storm. But also enjoyed getting to know each of you a little bit as we did the interviews with you leading up to today. So Charles and I have worked together for 25 years, and we've done several big projects together and a number of projects for, for counties and municipalities. We're excited to be working with Warren County. It's terrific that Charles, he grew up there, his roots are there, and it's a special pleasure to be working with Warren County. Now, the need for strategy is not new to, to this board. You've been addressing the kinds, these kinds of strategic questions for a while. We've tried to pay attention to that in the previous work that you did and bring it into this work. But it's probably good to have a reminder from our, our great, one of our greatest philosophers, Yogi Berra, who played catcher for the New York Yankees for a long time. Yogi has a way with words, as I think we've come to learn. But he says, the future ain't what it used to be. And with what we've been through in the past year in 2020, I think we can only underscore that. Good, next slide, please, Charles. One of the things that we've noticed in working with county leaders and municipal leaders and county and town professionals who share what you've just expressed in terms of their hopes and their vision for their place. As we go through these kinds of strategy activities, we tend to sharpen our strategic mindset. Because like Yogi said, the future ain't what it used to be. Things are changing around us, and we simply can be more strategic, each of us, and think about future possibilities, breakthroughs. So we think that's a, that's sort of an outcome that we, that we've seen through these kinds of projects. Next slide, please, Charles. Now, we also notice a lot of strategic fatigue, and I'll just tell you. We, we've met with a lot of groups over 25, 30 years, and folks say, my, my, my word, we went through all of that. What'd we, what'd we get from it? Nothing happened. And, and there's also the, the tension between those of us who may want to think about, gee, what could the future look like? And those of us who say, hey, man, we just need to do something. So that's our, our, our friends here on, on slides say, enough of the strategic planning. Get out there and kill something. So we hope to do both. We hope to have a vision and an action part. Next, please, Charles. And here's another reminder. It's a simple two-part strategy. First, locate the hills, then head for them. Now, that's a joke, but it really underscores the fact that strategy can get way too complicated, and in fact, collapse under its own weight. Charles and I are striving to ensure that doesn't happen here. And I think what we'll go through today is pretty lean and, and straightforward. And that is the objective. Next, please, Charles. And click again, please. This is a, what's called the S curve. This really comes out of biology, and it's really a, a symbol that indicates our lives, our careers, the life of an organization, the life of, of a place like a county. Next, please, Charles. And this is what it looks like. This is especially true for a small business starting out, but there are also lessons for each of us. I taught at Elon University for 14 years, working with young people, working with MBAs, all concerned about their careers. This is part of what we talked about in terms of careers, but here's the way, here's the way the cycle works. We, we start and we have energy. We enter a growth phase, and we hope to sustain that. But if this curve continues in its natural order, we reach a maturity and decline. I'll tell you very quickly. Here in North Carolina, we've worked with furniture companies that are, that have gone out of business. They were over 100 years old when they went out of business. And the reason they did is they reached that decline phase, and they never adjusted or did enough to change that. Next, please, Charles. This is the opportunity, if you remember, that growth phase is right about where A is on this, on this graphic. Where we think Warren County is right now is the opportunity to create a new path, a new set of strategies that is represented by that red line. So, so as to avoid just staying on the path and getting over to B. So, so as to avoid just staying on the path and getting over to B, where B rests on this slide, that's decline. So we, we, we have more chance of being successful if we can get, if we can catch on the, the upswing. Now, what that shading in the center of, of the, the red line and the white line represent, that's tension. Some of us are more open to change than others. Some of us think about economic growth and we think, isn't that wonderful? We can get more businesses in here. Some of us think, well, economic growth is going to bring more traffic. It's going to change our place. So all that has to be addressed. Next, Charlotte, please. That's the uncertainty. Next, please. Let's talk about this process. Click through if you would, Charlotte. Next. Thank you. Let's hold it right there. At the top of this, you see the present position moving to a future position. As several of you expressed why you chose to serve Warren County as a commissioner. You, the common thread of what you expressed was a desired future, to, to better our future. So we're all looking at that, moving from where we are now, our present position in blue, to a future position in green, as it says. But this should not be complicated, as I mentioned earlier. This is a four-stage process that Charles and I have used for a long time. The first phase is discovery. We're trying to figure out what, and, and the question there is, what do we need to know that we don't know? What are things that may impact Warren County? That we need to try to see around the corner, like COVID, by the way. Uh, we had some warnings about that, but, but it's, it's caught us. It, it's one of those things that um, we should have known more. But what does Warren need to know of what's happening around you with, with counties that are next to you? Uh, what's happening with uh, certain industries? What's happening with downtown revitalization in other places that can take place in, in Warren County? So what do we need to know we don't know? Charles and I will share with you what we've discovered because it leads to the second phase, strategy development. That's where we are now. We have uh, taken the feedback that you provided us. The, the experience and the knowledge that you have of Warren County and your, and your respective uh, careers and in your uh, serving in your government roles with Warren County. And we've identified a whole list of strategies and our work today is to get your feedback on those strategies. What we're looking for, as it says on this graphic, are high-return strategies. We can't do everything. We want to prioritize and focus on the highest return strategies for Warren County. Very quickly to finish this, once we get through with the retreat, after the retreat, we will work with Vincent and his team on the strategy execution phase. That's phase three. How do we put the strategies that we talk about today into action? This is where most plans fail. This is why strategic planning gets a bad name in some areas because we did all that work, we had all that energy then, may have been a year ago, it may have been two years ago. What happened? How do we, how can we see that we're making progress? That's going to be what happens after the retreat. We will turn these strategies into actions with timelines. And there will be ways to, there will be routines to, to make sure that that's, that's sustained. And finally, how do we measure? How do we know we're, we're, we're being successful? How do we keep the pro- process relevant? That's another thing that happens after the retreat. Charlotte, if you would, please.
And, and, and let me, let me interject something, something there. A lot of people do strategic plans. We've all heard, "Oh no, we gotta do another strategic plan, something to sit on the shelf." And I think, and, and what Dan and I found out through our careers is the reason they often sit on the shelf is there's no tactics to go with it. There's no action that goes with it. It just says, "This is the strategy." And the example I use is like in the military, the strategy may be, "We need to take that hill." That's the strategy. We're going to take that hill. Okay, how you going to do it? You going to call in our support? You going, but do artillery? You going to send a battalion of, of people up there? What are you going to do? That's the tactics. And so actions, a strategy without tactics is not a lot of good, I don't think. Anyway.
The, the final comment I'll make is that this process never really ends. There's no, there's no end to this. It, it, it continue, it really needs to be uh, updated. And we'll talk about that more in terms of the implementation of the plan. But in terms of discovery, this brings forward the work Charles and I have done, including importantly, the interviews with, with you and a total of 16 folks across uh, across the county. In terms of existing plans, we tried not to recreate the wheel. We wanted to understand what you had done already and also plans for other organizations around you. And so we've really looked at those and we'll provide a report and a synopsis of those plans. We've been mindful of that as we've suggested these strategies. Now, I'm going to get into the interviews with you a, a bit. And I'm going to ask for any feedback from you on the interviews in, in just a couple minutes. The interviews that we conduct are one of the key sources of actual strategies and actions that we find. We, we designed the questions along with Vincent and the Strategic Committee that represented the board. So we customized and designed these questions for Warren County. The average interview was about 90 minutes, including, as I say, with each of you. They are rich. The, the, we uh, developed a summary report that we shared with each of you. And the, I would encourage you not only to read that report for this meeting and we'll talk about it, read it later and reflect on all the comments that came through because it was quite worthwhile for us. Next slide, please, Charlotte. I'm going to give you in the uh, the interview questions, we had several questions that asked for ratings. So I'm going to give you uh, the results of those ratings. Then I'd like to come back and see if any of you have commented on the interview report or the interview process that, that we went through. So we asked a handful of rating questions. And they were on the scale of very unsatisfied, which is a one, all the way to very satisfied on the right-hand side, which is a five rating. When we asked this question on a scale of five, one to five, rate your satisfaction with county services, we gave the, we gave some examples of what that is. Yeah, it's social services and it's uh, parks and recreation, it's a library, it's economic development, it's education. We gave the, the, the interviewee uh, some food for thought, but most people were really switched on to this question. And they gave us a lot of additional comment and did beyond their rating. But the rating here, and let me just pause and say, the 16 people that we interviewed that uh, result in these ratings were all of you as the commissioners. We also interviewed county professionals, the county manager, the finance director, and the county attorney. We interviewed three folks from the Board of Education. We interviewed the three mayors from Macon, New Orleans, and Warrington. We also interviewed a couple of town professionals, Robert Davy and Blaine Reese. Blaine Reese is the Public Works Director in New Orleans. Uh, Robert Davies, as you know, is the Town Administrator in Warrington. So we tried to find folks who would, who would uh, represent a cross-section of not only the elected officials, but professionals, not only county, but town. So that's the, the, the body of folks. Now, the rating here, 3.28, is about average for what we see. We often see the satisfaction fall below three into that not satisfied category. But in Warren County, the people we talked to, three point, we'll get into, you know, what, what areas like, for example, broadband are problematic. Uh, but um, 3.28 is, is uh, a pretty average rating, just over that middle. Neither satisfied nor unsatisfied, moving toward satisfied. Let me finish these and then we'll, we'll open it up for comment. Next slide, please, Charlotte. Now, this is interesting. We asked, "Do you see Warren County growing over the next five years?" You see that 12 of the 16 we interviewed said yes, two said no. And then two said neither yes nor no. So what we see here is an erring on the side of optimism that we, that we hope comes through as we continue through the, the plan. Next, please, Charlotte. Now, this gets high marks. This is the highest rating uh, of all the questions we asked. And this is actually quite beneficial. If we're talking to someone who doesn't know about Warren County, somebody who'd like to move to Warren County, start a business in Warren County, or come up from Durham for the weekend, you know, to Warren County, is Warren County a safe community? You see that the average rating is 4.06 of five. So we're really moving toward a high, high level. The other thing these rating scales show us, by the way, which is helpful. It shows where one person rated this not satisfied. One person rated in the middle, a three, neither satisfied nor unsatisfied. 11 people of the 16 rated this a four, this question. And then three rated it very satisfied. That's what pulled this ranking up to a 4.06. That clear? Okay, next slide, please, Charlotte. Now, we ask a question specifically about the uh, county government departments and the operational aspect of the county. Pretty high marks as we compare that to other, other places where we, we've worked, 3.72. You see that one person was very unsatisfied, one was not satisfied, two were in the middle. But 11 were satisfied, a number four, and one very satisfied. So that pull that ranking up to a 3.72 of five. That again, is a, a good comparative rating across rural counties where we, we have worked. Next slide, please, Charlotte. And there's just, this is the next to the last question. We, importantly, we asked, "How does the county government work with other organizations throughout the county? How do you work with other county organizations, the school board, uh, other um, operations regionally?" Pretty good rating, 3.88. You see that one person not satisfied, five in the middle, eight satisfied, two very satisfied. Now, we have some specific strategies we're going to go over for. Who is it we want to work more closely with as a county or uh, government? And how can we do that? So, next slide, please, Charlotte, last rating question. This is really about your board, the five of you. How you work together as a team? And pretty good, actually, pretty good ratings compared to, again, compared to what we see a 3.53. Three not satisfied, six in the center, six satisfied, one very satisfied. Now, I will say, I went back and looked at these ratings just among the five of you. And they were higher. They were, they were right around four, an average of a four rating of five. So what that tells us is you value how you work together as a team. You value the collaboration and the trust that you have. And we'll go over this more in detail later, the elements of leadership. But that's essential going forward. So from the interviews we did, those are the ratings. I wonder if any of you have, uh, if you've had a chance to look at the actual summary report, if you, if you have any particular questions or feedback. You know, we asked things like, "What are the top reasons you choose to, a, a person would choose to live in Warren County?" Uh, what are positives for services? What are challenges for services? Uh, what are ways to optimize the economy? Uh, what are solutions to economic development? We also ask uh, those questions that we rated, how the board works together as a team. So in the, in the brief time you've had to look at this report, anything stand out to you from the summary report? We have some things that stand out to us, but I would like to hear from any of you first. Anything that stand out as you've reviewed the summary report?
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
I, I, one thing that I, I, I thought that uh, stood out, which um, and I'm under the heading of um, satisfaction with Warren County Services, I think down in the comment section, I think that somebody's um, replied that they traveled to Henderson, Raleigh Durham for their services and for their healthcare groceries and they, they put in there a Sam's Club, Trader Joe's, et cetera. That's one of the things that I think we should be more uh, that we can grow to, but be more informative to our, our citizens. And it gives, it does give us something to look at. But I think that on the other side of the understanding of where we are as a county and what I would love to have uh, some of these things here. Um, but these are the things that we, we do inspire to, 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 to have here or to be locally accessible for our citizens because we want the best for them also. But uh, you know, a, a Sam's Club, a Trader Joe's, um, that's a, that's a high mark.
Well, actually, here in Greensboro, we just got a Trader Joe's and it, it took five years. But I understand your point, uh, Chairman.
And the joke, joke on that, Chairman, is, or the joke in our world is every community says, "Why don't you get us a Target? Why don't you go get a Target?" Well, okay, there's, there's something about demographics that you got to look at before those things come. But, but being realistic and, and I think several of you mentioned before, people don't understand um, how, how government works and what it can do and what the parameters are and all like that. So anyway, but, but yeah, that, that's, it's interesting.
Well, well, the other part of that of, uh, is that, you know, I'm glad you put it like that. And I'm sure that my, my, my fellow commissioners will probably agree with this. And I've been on this board um, six years now. If it was that easy for me to go out and get one of these businesses to come here, I would have done it six years ago.
That's true.
There are other things though, that we'll get into that will enrich. For that person that thinks I need to go to Durham for something, like to a restaurant, for example. We could see some things emerging uh, in Warren with, with some focus, with some strategy. So we'll, we'll get to that. Other comments? We can give some uh, summary comments as you're thinking and it may spark more. The, the report we provided is highly detailed. And it's, it's intended to be a reflection of the feedback that we got. These are, this is honest feedback. So uh, we think it has value for this meeting and this, this uh, strategic plan that has value going forward. This is the kind of thing we would encourage you to do at particular times. Not just once, but do it, you know, ongoing. But let me give you some, some uh, summary that Charles and I have reflected on with this report. The first question, "What are the top things in terms of folks choosing to live in Warren County?" These are potentially assets that we, that we want to try and leverage. You can say this about other places, but Warren County has its own special character. Folks said, "There's a close-knit aspect. People look out for each other." This is a tranquil, peaceful place. There's beautiful land here at a low price. That is not true everywhere. It's affordable, cost of living. There's a sense of place. There's a sense of community. You walk down the sidewalk, you walk down the street, you know people. People have been uh, away, but they've really, they've decided to come back to Warren County. Family, heritage, and the generations of family and the family connections are important to the people we interviewed in terms of why folks choose to live. The two, not just one lake, but the two lakes that you have. Uh, Car Lake and Lake Gaston were mentioned. Not every county like Warren has that. And of course, the water system that, that you have. Then folks became a little more uh, strategic, saying things like, "Well-centered geographically." So if you need to go somewhere, if you need to go to Virginia for something or to the triangle for something, it's not far. But also, if, if we want to attract businesses, it's well-centered geographically. It's also proximate to interstates, anywhere you want to go, a- and to urban areas. Good infrastructure, as I mentioned, was the feedback include, I know there's some work to do on the water system, but gets high marks. gets high marks. Your public library got real high marks. Real high marks, becoming that kind of center and, and more people seeking that out. Parks and Recreation was cited doing a good job, social services, the acknowledgement that, a lot of work, paying out a lot of benefits. But people are really serious. The employees are serious in terms of how they deliver social services. Also, a couple of really nice things, the Vance-Gramble Community College was cited. Now, there are community colleges throughout our state. There are actually 56 community colleges throughout North Carolina. Vance-Gramble is a leader, and we can leverage that as we go forward. Safety, crime, pretty good marks. You know, it's not, people don't view this as a high crime place. Very quickly, the challenges, education. And we have tried to address these challenges as we created these strategies from your feedback. Broadband, definitely, that you're working on. Healthcare, we wish there were more doctors, we wish there was a hospital, those kinds of things. And lack of grocery stores, not the first time you've heard that, but that does show up. And interesting, somebody says, well, there's, there's no longer a full-service car dealer, you know, things like that. That we would, used to be in Warren, but are not there now. So that, that's, that's a challenge. Additionally, facility, county facilities may need some upgrade, probably a facilities assessment, one of the strategies. The courthouse is historic, but could use some modernization, some, some rehab. Again, infrastructure. So those are, those are clear challenges that, that were mentioned. Now, what I'm about to say in summary here, we're gonna take a break in five minutes. What I'm about to say in summary here, we'll, in terms of ways to optimize the things that are going on in Warren County, will come up directly in our strategies. The question was, what are some ways to optimize current economic assets? Things like manufacturing downtown, entrepreneurship, agribusiness, things like that. Downtown development, downtown revitalization was mentioned a lot by a number of people. And in the report that you have, we, we tried to give a count. Whenever somebody said a similar comment, we just said, well, that seven people said this. So seven people of the 16 explicitly said, focus on downtown development and revitalization in all the towns. Not just Warren, in all the towns. Now, we know there's a kind of Renaissance occurring throughout eastern North Carolina, especially where we've worked recently. With, with downtown revitalization, there's a lot that can be done, and we'll get to that in terms of the strategy. Also, part of downtown development is the ability to create a, a more of a creative economy. Give reasons for folks to go downtown. It might be a restaurant, it might be a winery that, you know, those are popping up around the county. Might be events, it might be more nightlife, especially for younger people, Charles and my age, who want to get out and go somewhere. Have, have downtown not to close down at 6 o'clock. Have it be a gathering place, have it be creative, ha- have a vitality. It's really, it's really a trend. We think there's a, there's an opportunity. And also, again, the, the lakes given as ways to optimize. And this notion of retirement and attracting more retirees there, that, that can be a strategy. And we'll pause on this one, agribusiness, agriculture. You, you have seen, I think, already, it's one of our four key goal areas that we're recommending. A number of folks talked about the, the history and the, the, the heritage and the whole transformation of agriculture. But what's taking place in Warren County? And how do we really optimize that going forward? And it can also lead to agricultural tourism, heritage tourism. There, there are historic places that have partnered with. So the, the end result of this strategic summary report, where we ask folks to think about what's positive, what's net negative. Importantly, we ask them for solutions. And a lot of the solutions are coming into the strategies that we'll go over. My and Charles takeaway, and Charles, I'll let you come on as we about to take a break. Our takeaway is, the situation is much more positive than negative. As we go over these strategies, we hope to create a kind of focus and, and an expansive approach to moving forward in, in Warren County. Charles?
I think my takeaway from talking to those 16 people, we often hear in the rural parts of North Carolina and rural parts of the country, that one of the problems is the brain drain. All the smart people went off to college, left, and didn't come back. But I tell you, 16 people we interviewed, there is no brain drain. Smart people, well thought out, good ideas. I mean, it was really, really impressive. Now, realistically also, we, we, we recognize, you got 20,000 people, you got, um, um, low disposable income. You got challenges with education and other things. It's just not a large critical mass. I mean, 20,000 people spread out over 464 square miles, largest town of 1,000 people. I mean, it's just, I mean, that, they're the realities. So what do you do with that? What, what can be successful as you try to do all of the things that you commissioners said, the reason you're on the board? That you wanted to improve this, and you wanted to improve that. It's a challenge. It's a real challenge. And to say it's not a challenge is not, is not being very realistic. But there are some opportunities, there are some ways, and, um, and we think, we think, um, you know, we, we think, hopefully, hopefully, some of the things we recommend will work, actually. So it's, um, but, and I've got one other thing to say before we go to break. That S curve that Dan showed you, when you're on Jeopardy, that's the sigmoid curve. So you'll know that. You got that right. Sigmoide, S-I-G-M-O-I-D. Now you know that. So I don't have anything else right now, Dan, unless, unless any of you have any questions or comments. And we've got down that we're gonna take a 10-minute break. It's been an hour. We've been doing this for an hour. And it's hard to look, I know, to stare at the screen for an hour. We don't have to take a 10-minute break, break. We can take a five-minute break. But so what, what's the pleasure? Mr. County Manager, this sounds like an administrative function. I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. I, I say, can we, could we do a five-minute break? Can we cut it in the middle?
By me.
All right. So just remember, if you need to stretch and, and take a break, just, you can turn off your camera, make sure your microphones are muted. And what time do you have on your camera, Mr. Parks or Mr. Hayes, on, on your watch?
I have 2:17.
All right.
Back at, back at 2:22. 2:22, how's that?
So, all right, so are you an hour behind us or something?
It has to be.
It is, it is 3:0, it is 3:02. Oh, my.
That's right.
Right. So let's, 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 let's be back ready to start again at 3:07.
Got you. This is right here, my glasses. 3:07, back at 3:07.
Thank you.
Is it 2:22 yet?
Yes.
Joe, Dan. Are we back?
I think we are.
If you could just do a check for Commissioner Pierce and Commissioner Baker, then we could go ahead and get through.
Baker's back. Commissioner Pierce, we're ready to go.
Okay, I think we can bring the slides back up. About to go over the, the main document. And thank you so much, Charlotte. Move on through that. Yeah, right after the break. That slide right there. Back one, please.
No, forward, click, click again. Next one. Next one.
No, back.
No. There you go. There you go.
I'm sorry, you want the, um, the, the four elements, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's just pause on this for a moment. This is the, sort of the main product of, of our work. Now, we call this a, a plan capsule or overview. And we, we created these years ago. Because the ability to communicate what a strategic plan is about is, can be difficult. So as you all are interacting with other organizations, well, even as you're interacting within the county departments. And then outside organizations, or you have an opportunity to speak. Let's say it's a Rotary meeting, and you might be speaking about your, your role as a commissioner and where the county is, what's going on in the county. This is a key, this is a key document for that. Lot of times, what we see counties do with this page, once it's finished, they laminate it. And they have it as a special kind of, so they can, they can find it. Some take it down to a pocket size, so they can show it. Sometimes, if you're, if you're trying to get a grant, get funding, having something like this can be helpful. We're gonna take it in turn. What we're gonna focus on first is the vision. But then each of those four goal areas, leadership and, and county services and economic and community development and agribusiness, we're gonna, we're gonna spend time on each of those.
And, and let, let me interrupt you a minute, Dan. This is, this is our recommendations to you. We're saying, from what we've learned from reading all of the previous studies that we could find, interviewing the people and, and other sources of information, these are the four goal areas that we think you should focus on. And we'll get into a little bit later why some of it's in blue and why some of it's in red, et cetera. And so, but this, this is, as Dan said, we've seen in other places we've done the, the, when we've done this for county governments, as we're doing it now, the county commissioners, once they have gotten this like they want it, they laminate and they take it with, with them to their, every one of their meetings. They say, okay, here are four, four goal areas. How are we doing? What, what, what are we, it keeps you focused. And anyway, so that's, um, excuse me, Dan, but I wanted to say that.
Well, Charles is quite right. We're, we're putting these in front of you, these are, these are in draft form. And we want to get your feedback, as I say, in turn, as we go through each of these. Excuse me. But as we look at this whole page, we have included the Warren County logo, and we're having a little fun here. We also suggested a byline that says Warren Rising, right underneath the logo. And that's just us having a little fun, but it may prompt, it may be food for thought. A lot of the counties that we work with are looking for that brand, that message. What is it that folks will remember? So, you know, we could see t-shirts or, you know, again, this could be a fun thing. But that's why it's there. It's not there because it has to be. You may not want it there. But it, it, in this retreat, we want to use it for potential ideas. What we want to focus on right now, at the top, are the vision and mission statements. I think we can get mission out of the way quickly. What you see there under mission is the mission statement that you created in your session last year. And we think it's, we think it's, it's good. And this gets back to what Commissioner Hunt was saying earlier. And this gets back to what Commissioner Hunt was saying earlier in terms of describing why he, you know, what's his purpose as a commissioner? And it links to the mission. To provide leadership and support for an effective county government that seeks to enhance the quality of life for the people of Warren County. We think that is a, that's, it's, it's, it's clear and it's direct. And it's not too many words, which is one of the failings of mission and vision statements. They can get too long. Now let's come back to the vision. Uh, as Charles and I started learning, where, where Warren County is today and where your board is today. We saw the mission. We didn't see a vision statement. We want to test out this vision statement. And that's what we're gonna ask you to do next. But what we did was we, one of the questions on the, the interview, uh, with the interviews was, can you provide some key words and phrases for your vision for Warren County? We really went back and looked at that. Understanding some of the elements of vision. We'll show those in a second. We drafted this and we want to test this with you. So here's the vision statement. To be the model rural county in America, known for our distinctive history and recognized as a leader for economic and cultural revitalization. So hold that thought just a minute. There is a, a handout number two. It actually says vision, vision and mission on the top of the handout. Like you to get that handout if you would please and have it in front of you. Cheryl, if you could go to the next slide. Yeah. Click on and keep clicking. Stop right there. Now, as we think about this vision statement, as you see reproduced here on, on the slide, that economic, oh, I'm sorry, that's, uh, that's actually another example. But as we think about the vision for Warren County, you see those, the text in blue? What we're really trying to understand or trying to express, what will success look like? If Warren County is recognized as a model rural, rural county, that's success. If Warren is recognized as a leader for economic and cultural revitalization, that's success. Inspiring. Does being the leader be, you know, being a place that is, uh, vital, does that inspire? Should also be a beacon in turbulent times. If any of us are struggling with COVID or struggling with the economy or other challenges, if we have that vision that says, we want to be this, what we aspire to be is this. That's, that's the purpose. Vision statement also prepares for the future. Now that next, that next line that says honors the past, that's really important. When a vision is created, we can't leave people behind. We can't just be looking forward. We have to understand how we got where we are. What brought us here? On whose shoulders are we standing? That's the honoring of the, of the past. And what we say in the vision statement is known for our distinctive history. And finally, big hairy audacious goal. To say we want to be the model rural county in America, big audacious goal. So if you will please go to your, uh, your notes page that says vision and mission. And click on through if you would, Charlotte. On to the next slide. Yeah, and a click again. For vision, what we really want, your worksheet, your notes page really asked, click twice more if you would, Charlotte. Your, your notes page asks these three questions. In what ways does the vision statement that we just looked at resonate? And it's on your, you know, one-page plan. How does it serve to communicate? How can it be used? So take a moment. Reflect on that vision statement. And, um, look at those questions on your notes page. We'll talk about it. Charlotte, if you would click back to that one-page plan overview. Where the, yeah, click on back, please. To one more.
Plan capsule. There you go.
So there is the vision. You also have the handout, I believe, that you were sent ahead of time. You can read that, that vision statement, reflect on those questions there, and we want your feedback in a couple of minutes, please.
Question for me. So are we using the one that's on the screen now, or are we using that next page that says vision and mission? Cause they're different.
Yeah, use the one that's on screen now.
Okay.
That's on the, the handout that you got, the, the, you know, one-page overview.
Oh, I see. I see what you're seeing.
Yeah, that's actually left over. We'll, we'll talk about that in a second. That's from Lenora County. We shared that with Vincent early on, just as one that we thought was strong. So I want to come back to that for comparison. But focus on this one now, please. Maybe another minute, we'll open it up. Charlie, you may want to go back to the group view and, uh, take that slide off while we're hearing from folks. Thank you. As we're coming back, one thing I'll mention is Vincent is making sure that notes are taken during, uh, our retreat. It's also being recorded, as most of you already know. When we ask you to make notes like this for vision, we're gonna be asking you to make notes for leadership and economic development and the like. If you would like to, um, let's say, write legibly and, uh, provide those notes to Vincent after the meeting, feel free to do that. As I say, there's gonna be other ways to take notes and make sure we're not losing anything. But if you, if you'd like to make sure that a note that you make or a thought that you had, um, gets through, feel free to hand that in to Vincent after, after the meeting today. Now, with this vision statement that Charles and I have, have drafted for your consideration, what's your feedback on that, especially in accordance with the questions that we ask you? Have any feedback?
I can say that I did. And what does it, the vision statement resonate? How does it serve to communicate? How can it be used? I think what was presented is not bad. It gives us a segue to improve upon. What I didn't necessarily care for was to be the model rural county in America, cause I'm like, what does that really mean? What does that look like? You know, what is a model rural county look like in America? So me, just keeping a lot of the words, but just cleaning it up is to be known and recognized as a leader for economic and cultural revitalization for rural counties in America or, and wherever. Just clean that up. I don't even know what it, you know, known for our distinctive history. I don't even know if I would include that. So that's, you know, what was presented is a good segue into where we can kind of go. I, I appreciated it, but I just wanted it cleaned up and reworded just a little bit differently. But it communicates that, hey, we need to be recognized. Hey, we need to be, um, this is where we're striving to go. And for that, I did appreciate, especially with saying the economic and cultural revitalization.
I really, feedback. I think the recognize, that's something you can, you can sort of measure in a way when you're recognized as a leader for those things, for economic and cultural revitalization. To be a model, you know, that's, uh, we've heard that from a lot of places. We'd like to, we'd like to, to be a model. But yeah, it may not be quite the, the right thing for, for Warren. What is, what is it?
And you're right, Commissioner Pierce, I mean, define model, you know, what does that mean? How do you, how do you know whether you are a model or not? What we were trying to get at there, um, and I always use this example a lot. I don't know if you, any Carolina or Duke basketball fans here, but, um, if it is, nobody, those coaches at those two schools, they don't want to be second best. So what we're trying to say is the big hairy audacious vision for Warren County is to be the best there is. Not second best, but to be the model, be something that everybody looks up to and says, that's what I want to emulate. And so that's the, that's what we're trying to get at, and maybe model is the wrong word.
I'd like to add. Uh, what I'd like to add in, in picking back off what Commissioner, uh, Pierce just said, and, um, I was sitting here, I was breaking down the, um, the vision statement within itself, but I went towards the, the center and one of those was, was recognized for innovation. And that means when you said you're gonna be recognized for innovation, then therefore you are already innovative. You're already there. So what does that look like? Uh, I do believe that words have power. And I think that's the reason why our vision, uh, with the, the words that we utilize in our vision statement are very impactful because it speaks to whomever that reads it. As it is associated with Warren County, they already understand where our mindset is. However, I am, um, kind of cautious on, on some of the things because, you know, being the center of things. And one of the things that we do struggle with here in Warren County is that, you know, we, we do have different, um, I guess, ideas and positions on what, what and how we want to be as being recognized as, who is Warren County? What is Warren County all about? When you say Warren County, what does that speak to you in regards to the, the citizens that live there and the things that there, uh, that we have here? And with that said, we've, we, I think that we've done a better job over the course of years of actually recognizing who we are as a county and the definite, the infrastructure and the things that we have here. And we've grown on those things. And this mission statement, um, does send me a little bit in, uh, in, in reserve because, um, when you say rural heritage and small-time charm, those are good things. They really are. However, at one point in time, that was the innovation and the, uh, economic culture then that now that shit looks to be preserved. But how are we gonna be known during this day on how we were, uh, I guess, develop ourselves as far as being the rural heritage of what then? Because we must always, of course, recognize our history. But we should also grow from it also in a modest way.
Thank you. What I'm hearing you say is that the, the words like recognized has power. And, but we also, but you use the word cautious, cautious in terms of, choosing the, the right, choosing the word. If we say we're recognized as a center, recognized for this or that, I guess what you're saying is we have to be able to demonstrate that.
We gotta be already be there. Cause we're gonna be recognized for something. We gotta be already presenting it.
Yeah.
Well, but in the, in the vision. Can I step in a minute? I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead, Victor.
Okay. Uh, here again, I'm a little slower than most of you all. So I, I, I interpret the vision is not where you are, is where you are heading. You know, um, and correct me if I'm wrong. And so your vision to a certain degree should or represent not necessarily what you are or who you are now, but what you would like to be recognized or what you're striving to be. And so, um, I guess from my perspective, uh, we're not there and, and it'll, in, in some of those things, we're not leaders, uh, in terms of economics and cultural revitalization. But that doesn't mean that we, we can't get there. And that, that shouldn't be part of our vision to, to be those, that, that type of, have that type of leadership. And I, I'm not opposed to saying that we should be a model, at least from our perspective, uh, a model rural county in America. I, I mean, I, I guess it's all in how you look at it, but that's just my perspective on what I see here.
And I think, I think, I think Commissioner Hunt, you are right, a vision is where you want to go, not necessarily where you are.
Yeah, it's, um, it's that notion of, I can see that, you know, I can see that, I can see the future. Come with us. We, we can see where we want to go. Come with us. That's how, that's the dynamic that ought to be at work with the vision statement.
The organization I used to work for, this was an anecdote, but I think it speaks to that. Their vision was to be among the world's leaders in intellectual capacity, education and innovation to do a bunch of stuff. We were not among the world's leaders in those things, but that was our vision. At least I thought we were not. And Chancellor Woodson, Chancellor of NC State, um, I was briefing him on the vision of this organization. He had just moved here from Purdue and he stopped me and he said, Charles, I thought you were that. That's why I moved here. But so you don't really want, your vision shouldn't be what you are. It should be what you aspire to be.
But I, I, I mean, I agree with what we are saying here. However, uh, I guess my comment was based upon our vision and was breaking it down and of course, by the words that, that's, uh, being presented. And I'll just read it like it is to be an economic and cultural center. And I'll just read it like it is to be an economic and cultural center of each North Carolina, recognized for innovation and preserving our rural heritage. Well, that 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 tells me, okay, our vision is basically almost the same as we are. Because if if we're going to be recognized for preserving, preserving our rural heritage and small town charm. You know, how much economic growth of being the center of things you got to be?
Mr. Chairman, we have messed up. You didn't, we did. Dan, tell him why we messed up.
Well, the. The vision statement that you're that you're reading is from Lenore County. It's one that. shared, we were given permission by Lenore County to share that with Vincent.
Okay.
And it's actually a pretty good example for the board to have of another county that's going through the same kind of transformation. The vision statement that we're putting in front of you is on this, you know.
Is this one?
This one.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and Chairman Davis, you're absolutely right. If that was the vision statement that we had for Lenore, if that's what we were, I would not propose that one for Warren County. You absolutely.
Well, thank you. Okay, all right.
Where did you see that? Get that from? I didn't see that one.
It can lay on us on another slide.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right there. And so that was, that's. That's the only mistake I think Charles made today, but we're not.
Okay, well, then I I feel better then.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you take a look at this vision statement.
I'm with you now.
You can reflect on that for a minute.
Okay.
And one and one of the things that Commissioner Pierce brought brought up, she wasn't sure, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, but you weren't sure about putting the. Part about distinctive history in there. Is that correct? Did you say that?
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
One of the things that is distinctive about Warren County, one of the competitive differentiators is your rich history. And I'm not talking about flight history. I'm talking about all sorts of history. First African American elected to the U.S. Congress from North Carolina was from Warren County. Thomas Day, the father of furniture in in North Carolina, wasn't from Warren County, but had a shop in Warren County, I understand. He was a free black man that lived, died in eighteen sixty-one, but he was a free man. And he he is what's known as built the furniture industry in this state. Head ties and then of course, more recent history Congressman, Congresswoman Eva Clayton, first African American elected to our U.S. Congress from North Carolina is from Warren County. And Soul City. When we were talking to Vincent the other day. Last Sunday is not not this Sunday, but previous Sunday, book review in the New York Times was reviewing a book about Soul City. And the New Yorker magazine in the February issue, February eighth issue, had a lead story on Soul City. So that that is, that is remarkable. I mean, that's something that that nobody else has got. You know, that was anyway, so it's just, it's a differentiator. Now, whether you want to. Whether you want to do that or not, that's that's y'all's decision, but it is a differentiator.
But I've I've had some time to, of course, look over this. I just. You know, I think the the points that were being made here in the vision are are really good. They're they're really good. However, I I don't believe that it speaks to all of Warren County. I really don't. I did distinctive history is very much. Very important. And and being recognized as a leader for economic and cultural revitalization. I just think we should have a little bit more into that. I really do.
Yeah. Other comments as we start to. Move forward on this, any any other comments? Commissioner Hunt, I heard what you said about a vision is, you know, what we aspire to be, not not what we are now. So we we, I think we all understand that. But. We we have some to dos that I'm hearing come out of this, but are there any other comments on this vision? To be inspiring, to be a big audacious goal is part of a vision. To be a beacon is another part of it. I like what you said, Mr. Chairman, about reflecting all of Warren County. And maybe as we go through the rest of the plan, it will inform that. So I captured that. Anybody else have any other comments on on the vision statement? What we what we want to do, we'll take this up with Vincent.
Dan, Dan, I think Commissioner Baker was trying to say something.
I was, I'm muted. I I was out, I'm sorry. I was, I was going to say, I would love to be that county that stands above all the others. And if somehow at the end of this plan, we can come up with some strategies of how we can get there. And it made me feel a little bit better when you said that, Mr. Hayes, when you said you all had a plan like that, but you didn't get there. But it doesn't prevent you from trying, you know, to get to be that particular county. And I just thought about the other counters around us. We would just have a lot of work to do. But nothing would please me more than being able to say that Warren County came from behind and now we're the. The beacon light for the rest of the counters around us. We just have to get together as a board and a county and decide what we're going to do and how we're going to reach that, reach that goal. I don't want to set goals so high, we know, you know, how we are from education. You don't set them so high that you can't reach it, but set some goals that we do need goals that we can work forward to. And the history that you mentioned, people's minds probably went the wrong direction because some of the things that you just mentioned, I'm sure that people in Warren County don't even know about them.
That's true.
That those people did those particular things. Mr. Day had a. Day at the museum last year, I believe, a year before, when they presented his furniture and whatever they are in the museum in Raleigh. And he was from Warren County, you know, had a shop here in Warren County. But some of those things that people don't even know, and that's something we do have to be sure that our people recognize and build on those things.
I like what you said about. Stands above, came from behind. I heard I heard you kind of reflect on that, Commissioner. And this notion of revitalization, I think, I think that's a strong word. And basically saying being recognized for revitalization. And I think what we will get to as we start to look at these strategies. We hope is is a way forward. And maybe get back to some of your other comments about what are those ways forward? That we can demonstrate. Anything else on this?
Sure, Dan, if I if I could.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say, I think the discussion among the board was great. And I I think the feedback that they have given about the vision, those are things like Mr. Hayes said, we can put on our to do list to kind of work on. Use their feedback to sort of refine it a bit more to to take their feedback into account.
Yeah, we'll actually provide you a worksheet, Vincent, that we could. Look at how to use that to engage. Further. But we always believe at this point in 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 developing a plan. If if there if there was not a. Definite vision statement, at least have something to start with. So we wanted to put something in front of you that we thought reflected a lot of the feedback. But we think that it 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 can be enriched further. So. We do have notes and some to dos on that, so. Unless there's other comment, we'll we'll move ahead. Okay. For about the next thirty minutes, and then we'll take, we'll we'll take another quick break in about thirty minutes. We want to get further into the plan itself. Well, let me just just say timeout. We didn't say much more about the mission statement. I made the comment that this was your, the mission statement that you that you developed last year. And that we thought it served quite well. One of you specifically referred to the mission in terms of how the. Being a commissioner and and how to serve, what that role would be related to the mission. Are you okay with the mission? Are you settled on the mission? Going forward?
I'm satisfied with it.
That's good. Anybody else?
I am. It speaks to exactly what we want to do. And it's brief, like you said, easily remembered and and written, so that everyone can understand it.
Yeah. So can we accept? That the mission is going to work going forward?
I agree with that.
So no objections? All right. Then let's let's move forward. Keep on going, Charlotte, if you would, please.
Skip on.
There we go. Hold on. A comment? Oh, okay. We want to move, actually, if you still have this, you know, the one pager in front of you that. Is the capsule plan, the plan overview. Each of these four goal areas, we're going to take in some detail, and we want your feedback. What we've done is to, we've suggested goal statements and strategies, but starting with leadership. And this really is a connection back to your mission. Because your mission says to provide leadership. And support for an effective county government. That's the first line of your mission, which is very appropriate. So in order to provide leadership. What we, what you see here on this slide. I've been involved in leadership development for a number of years, have worked with a number of other colleagues. And in trying to define. And ways to talk about leadership and what is leadership? For a board like like yours, leadership is. It's individual, but it's also the team, how you function as a team. And that's what this this particular approach is getting at. How as a team you perform in in these ways here, how you make decisions, how you manage information, measure progress, work together, share commitments. Very, very significant how mutual trust is exhibited. If there's conflict, how it's managed. And also being interpersonally savvy, you know, do we listen when someone else talks? And also navigating political dynamics. Now, that's a way to think about leadership, and it's a, it's a highly researched set of things. Let me further say this. As we came into. More knowledge of this board and as we went through the interviews and asked the board and others in terms of how the 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 team works together. We didn't hear anything that was. Necessarily a problem. We mainly had good comments. But even a high performing team always wants to get better. But having said that, we we've gone into places and worked with boards where they really didn't like each other. Where there was a lot of conflict, whether it was black, white, or male, female, or Republican, Democrat. There's a lot of, lot of sources of that animosity. We've not, we've not picked up anything here. It's for you guys, you know best, but the point that Charles and I think came away with was. Pretty high performing, high functioning board to build upon. But anyway, we offered that as food for thought in terms of, you know, are we doing these things as well as we'd like to do? Decisions, progress, working together. So any question on that before we move ahead? Okay. Next slide, please, Charlotte. Now, this is the leadership and governance goal and strategy section. That appear on your one pager, your plan capsule. And we're going to ask you, as we did the vision, we're going to provide you a notes page. And let you reflect on this. But leadership and governance as a goal area, we we think is. Absolutely essential in almost every plan. Now, the goal statement that you see there provide visionary and inclusive leadership. To guide the social, cultural and economic future of Warren County. We chose those words a lot from the feedback that we got. Especially the word inclusive, you know, to be to be an inclusive leadership team. And clearly guiding the future of Warren County. There is a strong connection from this goal statement back to your mission. So we want you to reflect on that. And then we offer five strategies. In your in your plan. And let me just touch on those, and then we'll give you a chance to reflect, make some notes, and we'll talk about it. First strategy is, sorry?
This, Charles, I was, excuse me for interrupting, Dan, I was, I was going to say, to remind you, these strategies are the strategies. And behind each of these five strategies, once, once we decide what the strategies are that you want, we will have action items. And what is in blue is comes off off directly off of your plan last year, your retreat last year. And we said that item two, we think that goal that create opportunities to formally here should be one of the action items under number two strategy. So that that's what we're looking at there.
Yeah, if I could just go back to number one, number one is almost a a kind of a best practice. From from, once the plan is final. And you're ready to roll it out, clearly, you want to engage all county departments as well as key partners. There are key partners that can help you. Execute the plan, help you make the plan come to reality. Partners like cooperative extension, for example. Partners like the school board. So want to engage the departments especially and key partners. Then it says establish systems to execute and sustain. We have a lot of experience on this score of systems to execute and sustain. And we're we're going to be glad to work through that with Vincent. It's like any project, there are systems and processes to help ensure that any project is continues to move along. So. There will be a series of actions, as Charles says, underneath that strategy. But that's kind of a best practice. Want to engage the right people to help us execute this plan. Now, number two that Charles just commented on, want to outline ways to enhance dialogue with all other other government entities and community organizations across the county and regionally. Strong feedback on that, and we know for sure. That there's opportunity to engage more with the COG, the Council of Government, opportunity to engage more with the Research Triangle Regional Partnership. Opportunity to engage more with A and T State University that's helping on a healthy foods project. So. That we see that current goal becoming an action, as Charles mentioned, to pull what what's in blue that you identified last year forward. To finish up, strategy three is to evaluate board effectiveness and committees. Sorry, yeah, number three, evaluate board effectiveness and committees and their structure aligned with strategic plan. Now. The board really ought to be connected to the strategic plan. Already, there was a strategic committee pulled together that Vincent pulled together with a couple of you. To help design the interview questions, to help look at this process that Charles and I are are engaged in. As the plan is rolled out. We think you may want to look at your committee structure to say, do we need a committee for leadership? Do we need a committee for economic development? A committee for county services, a committee for agribusiness? Committee, task force? And if we form that committee. Who should be on it? Could there be other outside partners represented on that as an example? who should be on it? Could there be other outside partners represented on that as an example? So that's up for consideration. Number four is another best practice, align board operating rules and guidelines, achieve ongoing effectiveness. We think that's what you're already doing. It would be good to document that in the plan. Number five is very important. Expand enhanced communication with citizens and the broader community about this plan. The number of ways we've seen that work well to do that. Certainly, social media can be used these days, but maybe an annual event, a state of Warren could be put on. We see that cropping up in warmer places. So what you have before you is a goal statement for this goal area, leadership and governance, five strategies that, that I've gone over. So unless there are questions, would you take the notes page that in fact says leadership and governance at the top should be the third of these handouts? And you have opportunity to make notes on the goal and on each of these strategies. So if you could take a few minutes to do that, reflect on that. We'd like to hear your comments.
All right. So what is it that you need us to be doing?
We provided a notes page that says leadership and governance at the top. Yeah, Charlotte, that's good. So if you go to that handout that says leadership and governance, we've reproduced the goal statement on that handout. And each of the strategies and provided you space to make notes. So we want to, and what it says in yellow, have you found that, Commissioner, that, that notes page?
Yeah, I see the notes page, and it has on here, please make individual notes regarding questions and advice going forward.
Precise.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you could take a few minutes to review those and provide any, please offer any questions or advice on those. That's what we've asked you to do.
To review the strategies that's on that leadership and governance on that page?
Yeah, is, is that not clear? Do we need to talk more about it?
Maybe it's just me. I don't know. Does everybody else know what they're supposed to be doing?
Yeah.
Let me take a stab at it. What we've got here, we've suggested under the strategies on the leadership and governance, five strategies. The first strategy is to engage all departments and key partners, establish systems to execute and sustain this plan. Do you think that should be a strategy? And if so, what do you think we ought to add about that or delete from that? Or is that just not something we ought to focus on? These are our suggestions to you, but it may not be what you agree with. And so that, that's what we're talking, thinking about, just any, any, any advice going forward, what you would suggest, how we would improve that? Just like Commissioner Pierce, you have some good suggestions on how to improve the vision. Do you have any, any suggestions on this? Or do you think that's good like it is? You know, so just what's your, what's your comments about that?
And there could, there could also be some suggested actions that come to mind. If we're going to engage department, engage departments and partners, well, are there particular partners need to pay attention to? So that's an example of what we're, what we're looking for.
Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks.
Yes, sir.
One comment that I want to make, and I think is, is very important, and that goes back to the people who you interviewed to get us to where we are today. And of course, those are, you know, the several mayor, mayors and the school board members and and other people that's of course in our community here. And I'm, I'm speaking about the plan for number two, strategies for plan two, number two. And, and, and that is something that I've always inspired to, I guess, build upon is of course, outside of COVID, that we can actually all get together. And basically, when I say we all, all the, the partners is from the municipalities and the other boards that are within the, the border of Warren County, that we actually can get together and strategize. Because, you know, I believe that if we had the opportunity to actually get together collectively and hear different ideas and see where, you know, their plans are and what their focus is, and then we can kind of like maybe align with them and they can align with us. I think we'll get to a better Warren County quicker and with a sustainable outlook, because all the partners are involved. And I think that I believe that, you know, the board of commissioners here have a good working relationship with other municipalities and mayors and, and we have a good communication, but I think that all of that needs to be brought into one house that we can all just hear from each other.
Good idea. You know, like a quarterly meeting or maybe, you know, every four months, you know, something, but periodic set meeting that you get together. You know, so anyway.
And dialogue, chairman, is, is, it's, it's two ways. You know, it's, it's what we would like to say, and it's what the other party would like to say, and what we hope we hear. We hope we listen and we hear. So we talked about this sort of annual state of Warren event that we see happening, you know, in, in other places. That's a two-way dialogue where it's not just the county saying, here's what we're doing. It's each of the municipalities having a chance to say, here's what we're doing. Not only that, here's what our needs are. Here's where we would like some help and how can we work together? So that word dialogue is at the, at the center of that.
There's one thing I'd like to add to that, that I, I do look forward to each year, and that is the we have an annual meeting with the Board of Education every year. And I look forward to that because, you know, we get to share ideas, they share their ideas and what they are going with the, with the schools and stuff, but I just like, that needs to be expanded to the municipalities and, and, and other groups within the county.
So we have an opportunity to line out the actions underneath that strategy after the retreat. And what you said about the school board was a, a, a big point of feedback. We interviewed three school board members and they're in the process of creating their strategic plan. So the timing is really good here to have that dialogue. And education is continually cited as a, as a challenge, as a need. And, you know, so, so this dialogue could be very helpful with the two strategic plans coexisting.
And we, we interviewed two education board members and the superintendent. We didn't interview three board members. Interviewed the chair, the vice chair, and the superintendent. And I suspect, I don't know, I haven't looked at your budget, but I suspect your largest single outlay is the education. So you might want to meet with them more than once a year.
Yeah, yeah. You're that Mr. Jones.
That's probably that, the key strategy there in, in, in leadership, and that dialogue is important. If any of the others of you are ready for any other comments, or if you need some more time, that's okay. Anything else stand out to you in terms of questions or advice or actions, anything?
Well, I'd like to have, make another comment. Not to crowd the conversation, but I just want to say that I think we as a board have done an excellent job in communicating with our citizens. It's one thing that we pride ourselves on is in citizen engagement. And through different committees that we have enacted different issues or things that we, we want to see done in the county or issues that arise in the county, we have definitely involved our citizens to be part of that. So I, I, I think that's one of the things that we pride ourselves on.
That'd be a great thing to note in the plan. If it's already underway, it only helps the strategic plan. It only helps it advance. But what I'm hearing you say is a point of pride.
So if, if we don't hear anything else, what we'll do next step, we adjourn today, we will say that these strategies, these five strategies on the leadership and governance of, of the strategies that we want to put in the plan. And then we'll get with, with, with Vincent and whomever he wants us to and come up with the actions that will go on to each one of those strategies.
Probably fine with that. Um, but number four, what, what is that? Align board operating rules and guidelines, achieve ongoing effectiveness. Explain that one a little bit to me. Maybe I missed it. What does that mean?
I might defer to Charles and Vincent on that one.
Just, just to make sure, and it's, it's really just good governance, make, and you may already have this. Make sure that you have your procedures that are as they should be. The rules and the guidelines of what you need to do and how you do it, the process that you go. Do you use Robert Rules of Order? Do you want to use Robert Rules of Order? What is the process that you go with aligning your board operations and your rules and, and guidelines? And we found out that, in, in quite candidly, in, in some boards, whether they be public or private, they don't need to pay as much attention to that as some other boards need to pay a great deal of attention to it. So people, but just so everybody knows what they're supposed to do and how they're supposed to do it and what the correct operating rules and procedures are. And if it doesn't rise to the, to the need for it to be a, a strategic initiative on the leadership and governance, then we can take it out. But it's kind of, kind of common, you know, that you would have it in there.
Vincent, any comment on that?
No, I think Charles captured, you know, what I would summarize that strategy as meaning.
It's kind of a best practice as you're presenting the plan to others. You know, that you're really paying attention to this. And since you're already doing it, it's not extra stuff. I mean, it's, it's just documented within your plan. But it might be just a note, Vincent, that we revisit this, and I think if we start to line out the actions, it'll tell us if it, if it should remain in there.
Right.
Do the test. Okay, we're slightly, slightly ahead of time, five minutes ahead of time.
I'm out again. I was muted again. I think it should remain in there. Most plans that you write will have that in it regardless.
Yes, ma'am.
That, that, that part of a plan is usually, usually in there, the way you explain it. And you can always go back and change it depending on, you know, what's going on in your that, you know, from time to time, because I have a suggestion right now for hours that, you know, needs to be amended and whatever. So I really think it should be in the plan, how we operate.
Anything else? I've got a couple of comments to maybe summarize this. Anything else?
No, and I'm good, except the number five where it has to expand, enhance communication with citizens and broader community. So we're already kind of doing a lot with that. And like you say, you probably do the state of the county address or something like that. We're already doing weekly addresses on the radio and stuff like that. But I think it wouldn't be a bad idea if we have a monthly department showcase in the local newspaper so that citizens, because long after I'm gone, whoever, you know, takes my seat next, a goal of mine would be that they would want to have our citizens informed about county government. And so I think as much as we can put information out there so that people are aware of, hey, this is what this department does, you know, something they may not have known. If we can do that as like an action, just continue to educate, it's be part of our, our efforts in doing something like that. That would help me, or at least if it's an action item, part of that strategy, I would appreciate if we would look at that.
Yeah, that's terrific. Anything else? Just a couple of comments, and, and thanks for all that. Back to number one. That's the work we have to do with Vincent after the retreat. As we, we have this, what we call an action matrix. And you guys have probably seen things like this before. But the action matrix takes the, the strategy and gives us a, a way to line out the, the actions, the tactics that are actually going to help fulfill that strategy. Who's the lead person or lead group? What are they going to do? What's the timeline for that? And is it going to cost anything? So that action matrix is what we want to line out following this meeting. And that's work, that takes work. And we've done it a lot, but it makes the difference. And that leads to number three, the third strategy, just to close this out. Once you get that action matrix and our timeline for that, I think we originally said that we would be able to finish up with you all somewhere around March 6th, but I think we ought to shoot for maybe mid-March. Vincent, we're flexible on that end date. We know how much work there is to do from the retreat to actually coming up with the action plan. But once, once we have the action plan, looking at strategy three, we're going, we're going to probably have some ideas on how to align committees and maybe particular commissioners with particular initiatives. So that's where the work comes in. One is real work, you know, how do we line out the systems and processes to drive the plan? And three is work, but it's, it's, it's kind of exciting. For example, we're going to take, take up agribusiness as a fourth goal. I would guess, Commissioner Hunt, you'd have an interest in that. And you might, you might. Board liaison, that's another, another suggestion we, we often make is there a board liaison to each of the committees under the strategic plan? So that's what number three is getting at, that strategy. So a number of ways to advance that. Okay. Unless there are questions on that, as I say, we're five minutes ahead of time. We can go to the, and we're shooting for 5:30, right? Yeah. 5:30 a sandwich before you have to work all night? Is that what we're shooting for? Okay.
I'm glad you brought that up. That, that, that sounds great. Let's stay five minutes ahead of time.
You don't usually get criticized for getting that early, do you?
Okay, what we want to do next, according to pattern, is take on county services. And Charlotte, if you'd pull that one up, please. Now, this is, this is great because what we tried to do, as, as Charles pointed out earlier, what you see in blue is what you identified in your plan last year. So we didn't want to lose that. We wanted to carry it forward. As we're looking at county services and certainly the, the feedback we got and what you all have been doing for, forever in terms of delivering county services, providing access to county services. We really put forth a goal statement that says achieve best in class delivery of all programs and services throughout our community. We chose the word programs because it also speaks to education. There are, so, and, and there, there are specific county services that resonate with folks. And so we wanted to try to capture both programs and services. The best in class comes out, we can come back to that. It, it's driven by some of the things that appear in the strategies below. But that was our thinking around that goal statement. So let's hold that thought for a moment. Let's recognize that the first four strategies come from your work last year. So first one is complete the broadband project. The next one is long-term water replacement. Third is the intergenerational multipurpose recreation wellness facility. That sounds pretty exciting, by the way. And fourth is the recreation master plan. So those are the four, the four strategies. So the, the other part about the, these strategies that they actually So the, the other part about the, uh, these strategies that they actually have some timelines specified. So as we, as we take up these strategies now, you may want to just ask yourselves, are we, or is that timeline still hold up? Do we want to put a timeline in, in our strategic plan for, you know? So those are the first four strategies. We're going to give you a chance to look at each one. The fifth strategy, we think gets to this best in class that's in the, the goal statement. And what the fifth strategy says is strive for service excellence through staff development. Focus on a mindset of customer service. Now that's powerful. Customer service. You already had a goal that appears in blue, increase employee morale each year through 2026. We think that should be an action underneath this broader strategy of striving for service excellence, focusing on staff development, mindset of customer service. That's the rationale behind that. To finish up these last two, number six, focus on education, collaborate with a school board on development of their strategic plan. We already talked about that. That I think is real high profile, really, really an opportunity as, uh, the chairman said earlier, a real opportunity for dialogue around that. That is real critical stuff. And then, uh, the final one there, number seven, ensure departments have all the appropriate structure, necessary resources to support delivery of services. One of the points of feedback we got was there should be a facilities assessment conducted. So that would be an action underneath that strategy. So unless there are questions, we also invite you to take on the next notes page, which is county services. As you just did with leadership, you see the, uh, the goal is reproduced on the notes page with the same kind of yellow highlight that, that invites you to make your notes, post questions, advice. Advice could include specific actions. So please take a few minutes and go through those. We'll talk about it.
And, and, and let me make comments on, um, one, two, three, and six. One says you're going to complete the broadband project by 2026. Vincent has, um, informed us that has to do with federal money is coming into charter or spectrum, whoever, whoever your chosen carrier is. So that's kind of fixed. Okay. You definitely probably unless you have completed February 21, you don't want to put something in your plan that says, you know, that you're going to complete it for a date that's already passed. And the same with March 21. So we need to do some adjustments there, assuming you want them to still be a strategy. And then, um, um, number six, focus on education. This is, this is what we want, what we're recommending you do, but school board might say, we don't want to collaborate with you on a strategic plan. So, I mean, that's, um, a little presumptive to think that, you know, you know, anyway, as you well know, that's an elected board too. So hopefully they would be willing to do that. But anyway, that, that's it. They were my comments.
I'm looking at number, um, five. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, but you're going to increase employee morale through the year of 26 morale to something you always want and you always work on it. And it looks like when we get to 26, we're going to be through.
Yeah, yeah. We, 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 we thought the same, but we thought maybe y'all had some reason for that.
I don't know. I don't like that. We're going, we're going to improve it through 26 and then we're through with you.
I agree with this big on that.
Just improve it. I mean, you know, I don't think we should put a timeline on improving morale.
So. Good, Mr. Jones.
If I could, thank you. Yeah, so it was just, uh, a factor of us trying to put some measurable timelines to the items that we came up with. But you're right, I think it needs to be, um, uh, it needs to be a part of the specific action. And so you're right, Commissioner Baker, for morale, you know, it needs to be ongoing, but we need to take some measurable actions, um, over a certain amount of time to, to keep that going. But it was just a matter of trying to make it.
I agree with that. I agree with it. I agree with it. If it's certain things we put under there, you know, that we're going to work on.
Right.
I think that would be fine to go along with the timeline, but just to leave it open.
I agree. That was a good, that was a good point. That was.
I, I want to ask this question then, Mr. Jones. Then if, if, if the 2026 is actually necessary for us to keep in there, then what are, then what are we going to do to increase it? Then what are we going to do? What, you know?
What you asking us for now? Is that what you're asking us to come up with now?
Well, no, I was asking, I was, I was actually.
No, I mean, is that what, is that what Mr. Hayes and those, is that what we're supposed to do now? Come up with some strategy, something to go under these items?
Not necessarily. We will, um, just if you think these strategies are something you want to, um, focus on that, like know that. And if you do have specific actions that you would say, well, I hope they really focus on, recommend that they focus on this, but what we'll do now is take this plan and go back and put the action items under it. Then of course, you'll have to say they're good or not. So.
So I, I, I guess my comment was, I, I would agree with Commissioner Baker. Are we going to leave it with the 2026 on there or not?
So no, from what I'm hearing and my response to Commissioner Baker was that the 2026 can come out as, because employee morale, like you said, needs to be ongoing. And so where we can put the timeline on are the specific actions that we come up with to try to increase employee morale.
Okay.
But this was, this was kept in because this is how the current year plan we have was written.
Okay.
All right. But I, I, he hasn't said anything, but I know Commissioner Hunt has said this, it's been about two years from now, two years ago now, something, or maybe a little bit less than that, I don't know. But the facility assessment plan, uh, is something that I know he spoke a bit, spoke about a long time ago.
Absolutely. It's one of the things that we have been trying to work on. And so, um, our plans got changed a bit when we began to be in pandemic mode. And so right now, you know, that we have an assessment being done for the courthouse specifically, which is going to be a big ticket item. And so that pushback, us being able to move the facilities assessment along, but it's still an item that we have to be accomplished.
Okay. And, um, I guess number two is our plan for the, uh, regional water system? Is that correct?
No, that specifically speaks to the fact that our water system is aging. We're at 40 some odd years old now. And so one of the things that we need to do is we need to start putting money aside to take care of the repairs that we know are going to be needed so we don't find ourselves, you know, 20 years from now when things are in disrepair all over the system. So that's what that's about.
Okay. All right.
All right. That one come under number seven as a, as a strategy, as a, as a plan, or that's totally different?
Come under as an action.
Uh huh. Or is it totally different?
The facilities assessment would come under number seven as an action.
As an action, uh huh.
Okay. Maybe Charlotte just bring up the, the group view. You see if there's any other, if you would please, if there's any other comments on county services. This is probably the most straightforward, uh, and the most familiar of each of the, of the four goal areas. It's what your key, uh, job is really. Keeping things running. So I don't know if there's any other comment before, uh, or could, or, or can we take these as, um, can we use these seven? Is there any, any, uh, any objection, any pushback? Any question about any of these? Can we go ahead and begin, uh, outlining actions to address each of these seven? Are you okay with that?
I am.
That's the next step. Any other comment? Okay. We will, um, why don't we take a five-minute break? And the reason I think it'd be good to take a five-minute break is we're going to take up economic development, uh, economic and community development next. There's a three-minute video we'd really like to get your reaction to. It's by the North Carolina Chamber. And it really, uh, presents what North Carolina's vision is for 2030, including the challenges that our state faces, which are kind of remarkably, you know, familiar and similar. So if, if you're, if you guys are okay with taking about a five-minute break, then we'll come back and, and get into economic and community development, starting with that video. You okay with that?
Yep, sounds great.
Now, Vincent, I have my glasses on this time and it's four, maybe 4:30 we come back. It's 4:24. Now that's Greensboro time. I'm not sure what time it is there.
He doesn't do math real good. That's six minutes, but okay.
I went to NC State. I don't know math, so yeah. 4:30.
4:30. Well, Dan, you and I are back.
That's right, Charles. Charles, you may want to, uh, say a couple of things about this video.
Okay.
Before we launch it. And then.
Okay.
You're going to want them to, uh, as they watch it, make any notes that they think apply to Warren County.
Yeah. I can't see the entire screen. Is there, um, Vincent, can you tell everybody back? I believe so. Um, we're getting, getting ready to watch a three-minute and 19-second video. And, um, as, as Dan said, it's produced by the North Carolina Chamber of Commerce. And it's really, really well done in, in my view. And it shows, um, the challenges and opportunities that we have in our state, um, in the next few years. And I want you to think about it as you're watching it and think about Warren County and see, okay, this is about the state writ large, but how does Warren County, how does this all affect Warren County? Um, be thinking about that if you will. So, um, I'm ready to go, Charlotte.
Who is in charge of North Carolina's future? Do you believe our state is on the right track? Do you believe our state is on the right track? Who has the plan to make North Carolina a world leader in job creation? And job retention? A world leader in education? And quality of life? Who has a plan for a strong business climate? Who has a plan for the millions of people projected to move here between now and 2030? Are we creating enough private sector jobs? Are our roads and bridges ready? What about our schools? Do we have enough clean water? Enough energy capacity? What are we going to do about it? What are you going to do about it? Do we want North Carolina to be the state where businesses relocate? Or a state that creates new businesses? Why not both? North Carolinians are hardworking. And innovative. If North Carolina were a country, its GDP would be 28th in the world. And we're on track to be the seventh most populous state in the country. And we're powered by world-class higher education. Vision 2030 is a plan for North Carolina to work together. How can you be part of the plan? How about one click of the mouse?
Any comments? Any, does that have any relationship to Warren County at all?
It really makes you think, you know, about where we are, where we want to go, it really does. It also basically says to me that if North Carolina has that vision, then North Carolina as a whole has to be in one of the, that has to be in one of particular counties, that they're looking to have those expansion of business or business growth or water quality or energy sector. All of those things come in as a factor. So of course, I know that holistically, the state has that viewpoint, but that has to reside in one of the counties, one of the hundred counties. And why not Warren County?
Well, I think it's good food for thought. We like it and we think it does spur you to think a little bit. I mean, the amount of people that are moving into the state, the fact that we'd be the 28th largest GDP in the world. If we were a nation, we're going to soon be the seventh largest state in the Union. I mean, this is North Carolina. And this is what you all leaders, yeah. So how do we, how do we make sure we get the correct piece of the pie? And that's the whole deal. So, okay, Charlotte, let's go to the next slide if we will, please. We're talking about now, our, getting ready to talk about what our community and economic development strategy is. And so we thought we'd spend just a little bit of time, not a whole lot. We could spend a whole lot, but we're not. Just talking about what economic development is. Bottom line, we think economic development equals community development. We think that places with clean water, clean air, good schools, safe environments, all like that, they are, they are spare economic development, good workforce, et cetera. But we define, and there are lots and lots of definitions about what economic development is. Dan and I, we defined it as the creation of wealth for place. Not for an individual, but for a place, prosperity. We said wealth, and in one place we were using that, somebody didn't like that because they thought it had connotations of, you know, wealth in at the expense of somebody else. So we put wealth, but we put in there prosperity for a place, not for individuals, but for a place. And there are three ways that a community, a county, a state, a nation can do this. And in our view, there are only three ways. Now, books have been written on it and, you know, lectures have been given and courses have been taught and on all of this. But basically, there are three ways to create wealth. You retain what you have in your area, whatever that area is. And in our case, it's a county. So you look around and you see what your existing businesses are. And you put together the rules and regulations to retain those. You put together the workforce training to make sure you'll have the necessary workers to fuel that. You'll do the things you're doing. You'll make sure you get broadband around, you make sure you do this, that, and the other. But you do things to retain that. And the second way, and this is not in any order, is you create it, entrepreneurship. You know, every business once was not a business. It started somewhere, even the largest. So you put together the infrastructure and the ecosystem that would allow people to be creative in entrepreneurship. You'd have funding sources revolving loan funds or access to them. SBTDC and SBC and all that sort of stuff. You'd be conversant with all of that, you would help. You would do all of those things. So you would put together programs and you would focus on that to create it. And the next thing is, you see something you want that's not there, but it's over somewhere else, then you go recruit it. And that's the whole strategy around that. And most economic development organizations say they focus on all three of those. Retention and expansion, creativity and recruitment. The fact of the matter is, what gets most of the ink and most of the time and most of the money is recruitment. Because that gets most of the ink, if you will, the most of the excitement when somebody comes in and cuts a new ribbon to announce some new company coming in. But what we have to decide here in Warren County is with our limited resources or finite resources, we don't have all the money in the world, what are we going to do? We all, from your comments and throughout the day, you said you want to create good-paying jobs. You want everybody to have better health, you want to have outcomes out of better. So what are we going to do? Are we going to, if we got $100, we're going to take $33 and put in each one of those? Or we're going to say, no, we're going to double down on creativity? We're going to put $75 in that and $12.50 in retain? Anyway, that's, you got to look at those buckets, they had three buckets. How are you going to do that? And this is what you'll do when you go through your economic development strategic plan, the part four economic development. But that's what it is, that's what economic development is. Next slide, please, Charlotte. And this is what it is not. Economic development is not about economic growth. You can have places that are growing, that the GDP is increasing, that you look at the data and the economic growth is phenomenal. But yet, the poverty rate's still climbing because the economic growth that's sparing off these jobs is not paying a livable wage or whatnot. You can have economic growth that's doing it at the expense of the environment. I had, at one point, there were two Chinese gentlemen that had done some sort of fellowship or something at Duke. And when they were leaving, they'd been here six months, in the country six months. And when they were leaving, somehow or another, I was on the exit. They came by my office to do an exit interview for some reason. And I asked them, when it finished, I said, and they'd been to San Francisco, New York, all around the country. And these are the guys from Beijing, both of them were Beijing. I said, what is the most surprising thing you learned? These are educated young men. Surprising thing you learned about the United States? And they looked at each other without hesitation. They said, we did not know you could see the moon in the daytime. Beijing is so polluted that they had never seen the moon in the daytime. They'd never done it. So they had lots of economic growth, but I don't think they were having a lot of economic development. So that's a good, large example of what we mean the difference of it is. And that thing you just saw, the video you just saw, it said, one in four of our children, 25% of live in poverty. And that doesn't mean they don't have enough money. I mean, that means they are in poverty. I mean, that's just horrible. Anyway, so now you know what economic development is and what it is not. That's it, clear notes. So, Dan, you want to take this next, or you want me to keep on?
Yeah, clearly, economic development would be for the entire county. And the feedback was very much emphatic about engage, have dialogue, engage all the towns, engage throughout. Next slide, please, Charles. This is a one-pager that basically identifies everything, the dynamic of economic development. These are the things we talk about, from skilled workforce on around the circle to education, to infrastructure, quality of place, you know, at six o'clock, capital, costs of doing business, investment, research and development. Those are the kinds of things that companies look at in terms of, should we locate there, should we stay there? Can we grow there? At the top is leadership and governance. What makes the difference in our experience is leadership and governance. How you are positioned and how you line out your strategies, how you lead, how you include, how you partner, makes a difference. Next slide, please, Charles. This is the third goal area, economic and community development. We started getting excited when we lined this out. A lot based on the feedback and our analysis of other plans and so forth, our experience in terms of what might be best for Warren County. We drafted that goal statement. Leverage the best of our assets, our communities, our people and our history. Revitalize, grow our 21st century economy. So that's the working draft goal statement we put before you. You're going to have a notes page again on how to respond to that. Now, each of the six strategies. Strategy one, we recognize that you did an economic development plan in 2019. So we reviewed that. Basically said, update it, bring it forward, make it more comprehensive. And then dedicate funding and resources to ensure economic development capacity. Without capacity, it's unlikely you'd be able to move forward economic development. Then number two, and enhancing and leverage distinctive Warren County assets. Now, we can kind of get into that. But it might be the lakes, it might be water. It might be the kind of quality of place that people talk about in terms of attracting people to Warren, keeping people in Warren. Number three, evaluate partnerships that currently have, some you'd like. Collaborate with key county and regional organizations to grow the Warren economy. This includes the Council of Government, the COG, Research Triangle Regional Partnership. They will have, and also the NC Department of Commerce. There are resources there, they can help. Some of those places, you're paying dues. So you had to look at, you had to evaluate that. What are we getting for that, what would we like to get for that? So that's what number three is about. Number four is very specific. We we understand that there's differences of opinion on how frontier Warren came to be there. But it's there. And we remember when it started in the Research Triangle. If it's going to stay there, let's leverage it. And importantly, build out that entrepreneur ecosystem, which basically means, can we get people that want to invest? Can we get people that want to educate and mentor? Can we get people that want to counsel? To market? So that's the ecosystem. And then number five has some energy around it. Capitalize on opportunities to enhance downtown revitalization. All the downtowns, by the way. Heritage tourism and build out our creative economy. That creative economy is defined by the arts, the culture, the amenities. What we talked about earlier with the nightlife. How that might be built out in Warren. Had this interesting conversation with a couple of people. About folks from Durham. Could be a young married couple coming from Durham to spend the weekend or the day. And say, we just want to get out of an urban area and come to a different kind of place. So there's a kind of vibe, you know, in Durham that, you know, we could capitalize on and connect to and attract more people. So that's what that creative economy presents as an opportunity. And finally, there's the branding and marketing that must eventually happen to promote economic development and the county. So with that, as we've done before, please pay attention to your notes page on community and economic development. Look at those strategies. Please offer any thoughts, questions, actions. And then we'll move on to agribusiness after this. So please make your notes, take a couple of minutes, we'll talk about it.
Mr. Parks?
Yes, sir.
Before I can process my thoughts on a couple of these, I have a couple of questions in reference to your interview. Number four and number five. Of course, those are partnerships that the county is engaged in. So I would like to know, what was the feedback in your interview with them? Because we, as county commissioners, have a mindset. As you said, that there's a different opinion, especially when it comes to frontier Warren. What was the feedback that you received in your interview that can better help us formulate our ideas with their ideas in reference to this plan, this strategy? Because I think that's what's been the ongoing issue as far as what strategy did we want to take?
Well, I want Charles to channel you too. Frontier Warren's very specific. So let's hold that out to the side for just a moment. That's number four. Number five is those are initiatives underway. Now, it doesn't, the county may not be leading those, but there are initiatives underway. But they ought to be county-wide. You know, downtown revitalization, beautification, building a creative economy really could be county-wide. It's what happens in Warrington, can happen in New Orleans, it could happen in Macon. But then Warren County develops a whole brand for that. We got strong, if you go back and read the interview summary report, you'll see comments related to downtown revitalization. And yeah, I think it will require the county partnering with, getting behind, supporting in whatever way, downtown revitalization. Frontier Warren, unless you want to close it down, unless you don't want to support it. It is a, it's almost a unique kind of fact that it's there. Charles?
Yeah, let me take a stab at that. As I was just looking through my notes, Commissioner, and I did not see a lot of comments about frontier Warren from the interviews. But that's not the only source that we drew information. We read your other plans, we talked to other people, we did all the stuff. I mean, we talked to people that weren't just official interview things and just general knowledge. And frontier Warren is the first foray that the Research Triangle Park Foundation has made outside of Wake and Durham. that the Research Triangle Park Foundation has made outside of Wake and Durham County. And it's phenomenal that it's coming to Warren County. Now, whether it'll be successful or not, whether it won't be, but they didn't choose Halifax, they didn't choose Vance, they didn't choose Madison County. They chose Warren. And that is just phenomenal. The Research Triangle Park, largest research park in the United States, um, was, I mean, it, it, it's the deal. And it's, um, and they are trying to figure out how to reinvent themselves also. They've had some challenges. And one of the ways apparently they're looking at, I know they started a frontier center in, at, at the park. Um, and they put a satellite in Warren now. And, uh, from what I can gather, they're not putting any money in it really. They're just using the name. But still, it ought to be something that we could leverage there to be an asset. Now, having thought of this and, um, and, and, and I have not had this conversation with Dan. So, but I'm thinking now that maybe, um, strategy four ought to be the strategy is to build out the entrepreneurial ecosystem. And one of the action items would be fully leverage frontier Warren itself. I mean, that, that, I mean, there'll be other action items. I mean, not, not to make, mention anybody's name, but I am, I know Gabe Cummins. And, and, um, I mean, he's got a lot of entrepreneurial stuff that he's doing. And there are lots of, lots of initiatives in Warren County. But somehow another way to capitalize on the fact that the first foray outside of Wake and Durham County that the fame to Research Triangle Park did was in Warren County. In my view. But I do, I do think, I mean, it is really more of an action item, what you, what the strategy is to build entrepreneurial ecosystem. And that's one of the ways that will be an asset to do that.
I think that's right, Charles. I, I think that, that makes sense. So then frontier Warren really becomes a subset. It's not the lead.
Yeah.
It doesn't show up on a strategic plan, like the one pager like we've been looking at today. But it's there to be evaluated, to be leveraged if possible. So that sounds good.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good edit.
Mr. Chairman, um, you, 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 you raised, uh, strategy six as well. I think we, we, strategy five, again, we think, I've, I've spoken to that, but be glad to hear from others here. Just to close this out, strategy six is, uh, and, and Charlotte would be great to get her, her feedback. And we, we'd like to do that as we start to look at the action plan. But no matter what's created there, unless number six takes place, you know, it's how it's marketed, it's how it's promoted. That, that must be, um, that's usually a key strategy.
So like one of the things you'd want to look at in that, I would think, and whether you decide to do it or not, was an initiative, initiative that, um, WRAL has ongoing now. Um, um, and in full disclosure, Hayes Group is also a strategic advisor to WRAL on some of their marketing initiatives. Um, but they've done some work with Cotterack County, Nash County, Beaufort County, and some others that is, are promoting their, their, their area. They've, um, they've got lots of different, but anyway, that, that might be something that, that whoever runs your economic development programs that Charlotte might want to look at, might say, well, that's really great, but we can't afford that. Or might say, well, I don't want to do that, but Nash County doing it.
Pretty, pretty snappy there, Charles. Are there any other comments on, on these strategies before we think about some next steps with this? Any other comments here? Economic Community Development Strategy?
Or number five, one of the action items that I would like to see, um, with capitalize on, on opportunities to enhance downtown revitalization. Heritage tourism, I think, you know, and I don't know what part economic development is kind of be able to play a part, or just us as a county board with the diversity as well. Um, with downtown revitalization. I think that's one of the issues that, or that may be one of the points that needs to be brought up. Um, as well as the beautification of it as well. So those are just a couple of things that we may need to be invested in as well. You know, with the beautification of downtown and how much we're able to do, being that it is our county seat. And not just in Warrington, but also other municipalities, but then also, um, looking at the diversity as well.
Very helpful. It, it's a great example, Commissioner Pierce, that in, any notes like that you have and others of you where you've made notes and haven't shared them or, or had time to share them, pass those to Vincent if you think it would be helpful. But that's the kind of thing we're really trying to dig, dig down into, Commissioner Pierce, or those kinds of actions and qualifiers. If we do this, then we need to have, as you said, diversity. So, um, that, that's extremely helpful.
Dan, if I could, myself or Ms., Ms. Pulley, who is the clerk to the board as well?
Real quick, can I say something? Just, I, I'm, I am very interested in number six. I do think that we, and I think it's in the current strategic economic development plan to, um, tell our story a little better, be, be better storytellers. I do think that number one, um, number one is going to be important for number six, right? Ha, because marketing is expensive. And so we need to make sure that we're targeting, you know, do we want to target for site selectors? Um, do we want to target for tourism, you know, and, and I think it's incumbent upon us to maybe think about not just a strategy for economic development, but a communication strategy for the year where we plan, plan these things out based on, based on number one.
Hey, good, Charlie. There you go. It's almost like you're, you're at a conference or you're somewhere across the country. And somebody says, well, where are you from? Well, tell me about Warren County. What would you say? Now, if you're at a conference and it's, it's kind of a business focus, you might say something more business oriented, but what do we say? Um, and if it's a little more social, you might say, well, here's what's so special about Warren County. But the key word you used there, Charlotte, was story. You know, what, how do we tell our story? First of all, what is our story? How do we tell it? I think we can take your feedback and work with Vincent and Charlotte to refine and move these strategies forward with some actions, if that's okay. Unless there are other comments, we'll, we have 30 more minutes. We'll, we'll move on unless there are other comments, we'll move to agribusiness. I don't want to go too quickly. Anything else? Yeah, good. Um, this is the fourth and last goal. And Charles, I'm going to invite you in just a minute to say more about agribusiness and what we're seeing more generally, but uh, we think it's, uh, uh, important. We think it's something that's certainly, uh, in Warren County has been for generations. The key word there is transform. Transform Warren County agribusiness, modernize, carve out our niche in global agriculture markets. That's a big audacious goal, but, um, let me just look at the strategies real quick and then, Charles, you can comment. Number one is to really look at who's the, who's the leadership team that really helps guide a transition plan for agriculture. So can we establish a leadership team? Can the county, can the county be a champion of that? Can county get behind that, support that? Can we leverage key partners that really don't cost us anything that are amazing, like cooperative extension? And number three, can we focus on a particular opportunity to optimize, optimize research on healthy food initiative taking place with A and T State and actually Eva Clayton? Number four is a good thing. It can also tie to that creative economy, that revitalization of, of place. Advance agriculture through tourism, farmers markets, events. And then number five is similar to what Charlotte was just talking about for the county. Can we, can we tell our story on the value of agriculture, the value of it? But many of us today can take for granted that we're going to have food. But farmers and other people close to agriculture, I mean, it's a vital, vital, uh, kind of, um, endeavor. So can we, can we, can we communicate better on that value, leverage our history? So with that, Charles, any comments you would make and then we'll ask for feedback?
Well, the goal, um, you know, we, we're being pretty audacious to say we want to carve out our niche in the global agricultural markets. The, the population of the world is, is growing a lot. There's a lot of writ, a lot of research and a lot written on how we're going to feed everybody. So agriculture is important, always has been important, but it's going to be more important tomorrow than it is today. And so what in that global market, and it will be a global market, um, what, how, how does, how does Warren County fit? Now, everybody, and I'm, I'm the one that believes that, um, when you compete, you compete to win. And you do what everybody, as I said before today, I think, you do what everybody else does, and you do it better, or you do something different. Um, and that's what you'll have to decide here because everybody and the brother is trying to get into the agribusiness business. Um, and they're all trying to do small farms and they're all trying to do food to table. And they're all trying to serve their local high schools and all like that. They're all trying to do that. And, um, um, when Dan and I did some work in, uh, it's public record in Moore County, which is Pine Hill, Southern Pines, they had an initiative to do stuff like that. I mean, everybody does. Um, and so what are you going, it's important. We need to do it in Warren County. It's one of the four goal areas that Dan and I came up with, we need to do. But now the hard work is, we got the strategies there, but, um, you know, how, how are you going to really do this? What are the action items that can make this, um, alive and successful?
So perhaps looking at those strategies as we've done with all the, uh, the other three goal areas, what comments and feedback do you have on those? Take a minute, review, and we'll talk about it.
Mr. Parks?
Yeah, sure.
Is it, is it the mindset to, in reference to strategy number one, maybe have a, a commissioner to sit as a liaison with the other, uh, like, um, corporate extension or something like that? Is, is that the viewpoint we're trying to get here?
Yes, I think, I think it would be really good for a commissioner to be attached. Charles mentioned Moore County. When we, we, we actually did a day-long facilitation of all of the farmers and agriculture businesses and support resources for agriculture in Moore County and that region. And they really, uh, identified a leadership team uh, for agriculture in Moore County. One of the, one of the people was the economic developer, was on the, the leadership team, and then there was a commissioner on the leadership team. Now, there were other people like, uh, cooperative extension, which is, uh, I think we all know who they are. NC State Cooperative Extension, uh, Ag Extension. So to your question, that would be the idea, that a commissioner would be, could be liaison and then maybe help to formulate with others who that leadership team would be.
Well, maybe you gentlemen don't re, um, realize this, but we have one of the biggest uh, successful farmers on our commission board, um, in the region, Commissioner Hunt. And, uh, he's a part of A and T. And, uh, that's something I would really like to see because he does have a wealth of knowledge in, in, in the ag business. And, um, I think that, um, outside being a, uh, being formal as, as far as having him as a liaison, he, he is really, um, and I'm not just saying this because he's a friend and of course a fellow comrade here, but, uh, he's really been engaging. Uh, I know other people who have intentions on, you know, doing farming things and, and, and they say, you know, they, they talked to, uh, Commissioner Hunt. He's been very engaging already in the community and giving advice and often his opinion on, on farming within the, uh, in, in the county. So I think that will be a great thing to have, uh, have him serve as a liaison at some point on, on agricultural ambitions that we have in the county. Now, Commissioner Hunt, you came back away from that.
You on mute?
There you go.
You on mute?
Still, still on mute, yeah.
He says he has some technology challenges here, I think.
I muted him earlier and it was a mistake.
Okay. I think you got muted. Can you, you can unmute yourself?
Look, here's, but here's something that, that in ag that we need to, that, that, I don't know where this fits into Warren County or if it fits into Warren County at all, but I just looked at something. And in 2019, the retail food market grew by 2.2%. This is global. But the, um, plant-based food market grew by 11.4%. I mean, it seemed like yesterday that this Beyond Beef was something that was in labs and now they're in, there come um, Burger King and what have you. I mean, so what does that mean? How's that going to go? Is it, you know, what, what's the future of that? Um, or is it just a flash in the pan? But I mean, there's so much stuff that's changing. And, um, and, and Commissioner Hunt would know about all that. He's, that's what he does for a living, so.
Okay, can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Paul. Uh, well, I hear those comments, uh, I think Mr. Davis, uh, kind of embellished, uh, my credentials a little bit, but, uh, I think a comprehensive transition plan is really necessary. Just thinking about the history, you know, this was a tobacco-producing county for the most part. And everything was already built in, in terms of production, marketing and all of that, you know? So, uh, that's gone. And I don't think we as a county, uh, we haven't really transitioned from those tobacco production days to, uh, something new. And, and so that transition plan, uh, and it should be a group of, of leaders, uh, especially those that may have a background in, in agriculture, to look at some new and innovative things, uh, that could possibly take place in the county. And whatever these new and innovative things are, they need to be branded to the point that you can say, this is Warren County. I think Johnston County, this was years ago, they said they were the sweet potato capital of the world. I don't know if they are or not, but that was one of the things that they promoted, you know, uh, so, uh, I think it's very important to, this number one strategy, uh, is, is very, very important and, and we have to have some type of transition, uh, plan going forward. I'm done.
So other comments on these strategies and on agribusiness as a, as a goal? Are we supporting agribusiness as a, as a goal, as a stand, standalone goal in, in the county plan?
I think we need to.
I think that's a big part of who we are, so, yeah.
I, I think it's, um, there are already things underway and, and certainly Commissioner Hunt knows this intimately. There's, there's just some amazing things underway. Like you were saying, Commissioner, let's, let's get the word out. May not be the sweet potato capital, but we might be capital of something, something else.
And, and this, let me just say, I think, uh, whether the location, the, the farmland that we have, that's something that we can leverage and, and making this happen. So, you know, uh, this is who we are and, and I, uh, we just have to transition from what we used to do and, and, and there's a new, new type of agriculture out here. And, and, uh, and things like hydroponics, agraponics, uh, even with, with the land we have here, we, we could be the, uh, honey capital of the world with bee production. I mean, there are just so many possibilities, uh, but we just have to bring the people to the table to come up with this, uh, transition plan that would probably work for Warren County.
That's terrific. Okay, we have, uh, 16 minutes, we might even have 12 minutes left. We want to finish early here, so, uh, let me get any other feedback on agribusiness before we close out that, that goal area. Any, any other feedback at all? Appreciate that. So we, we presented four goal areas. The last thing we're going to invite you to look at, and I would, is the last handout is on the, the entire plan. And it's, it's called, uh, Commissioner Notes, the Plan, handout, handout number seven. I might invite you to look at this now for a few minutes, but maybe take it with you as a, as a transition. Uh, but take a moment and, and look at those questions and make some notes. We have, we have, um, the right amount of time remaining. And please offer your thoughts on what do you see is positive about the plan that's been presented today? The vision, the mission, the four goal areas, the strategies? What might be missing for you? Number two there. Number three, this is important for us going forward. What is your biggest priority? It may be agribusiness. That, that for Commissioner Hunt, uh, as an example, but, um, and then what are the essential next steps for the plan, some of which we talked about? So please take a, a few minutes and make some notes for yourself and then let's close out by talking about that. Thanks, Charlotte, you could go back if you would please on full view. Maybe another minute for, for your note writing. Everybody ready? Anybody not ready? Okay. Let's take these questions in turn. The first question, what do you like about the plan? What are some positives that you see? Anybody have any feedback on that?
It's a plan.
It addresses that priority areas of our county government where we need to be focused on. It doesn't give us answers, but at least it addresses, hey, these appear to be your greatest areas of concern.
Got it. Let's see. Other, other commissioners, uh, what do you see is positive about the plan?
I think it was well, yeah, I think it was well-presented and it gave us the ideas that we need to work on for accounting. We just need to look at the strategies and be sure we put some, um, uh, workable strategies on there that we can, um, that we can accomplish.
Thank you. Thank you. You have a comment, sir? Commissioner Hunt?
Yes, I, I think is, is this has provided a great map or blueprint to move forward. Uh, and it addresses, uh, some of our critical areas of concern.
Thank you. Funny, Commissioner Powell, anything? I think you may be on mute.
Wow. You still on mute?
Yes.
Yeah, still, still on mute. Sorry.
I'm coming.
Maybe come back, um.
There you go.
Okay, all right. Okay, I, I said that, um, putting this plan together would be some hard work and dedication. And each and everybody need to get involved to make it work.
A question about that. All right, sir, anything else? Thank you. How about number two? A-anything missing in the plan? Any negatives?
Step by steps.
Yeah, the answer key.
I'm sorry?
Said what's missing, I said, yeah, the answer key.
Other comments on that? Anybody? Well, we hope to fulfill that step by step, um, at least have a good start on it. Think about number three for you. What's your biggest priority or two that you might see in the plan?
For me, it's going to be a collaboration, um, collaboration with the partners, the school system, the municipalities, so that we all have that same vision. Once we define what that vision is, that we're all on that same page. So for me, that's going to be a priority. Aside from broadband, I mean, that's, that's a given, you know, just regardless, but outside, outside of broadband, because that's just, is what it is, outside of broadband, the collaboration between, um, elected officials.
That's excellent, yeah.
It is something that, that y'all put in there that I, I was reading over and I like to basically apply it to everything that's on there. It is, uh, establish systems to execute and sustain this plan. So that, that was the catch-all for me. Um, I mean, you can apply that to each one of the things that we're discussing here today. And, uh, to sustain the plan, that, that's, that's where we are and, and that speaks to everything.
Yeah. Come back to that. Anything else in number three as, in terms of, uh, let me just ask, uh, Commissioner Hunt, what do you see as priority?
Well, uh, broadband is always, uh, top priority, but you know, my heart and soul is in agribusiness, so, uh, but, but, uh, overall, I think, um, under county services and the broadband project right now is probably the most crucial thing that, that we can, um, can do. And, and I think it's, it's one thing that everybody in the county will benefit from. And, and it might be the catalyst for some of these other things to transpire in the county, so.
Yes.
That, that's, that's where I am, but all of them are good. I mean, it, if I had to pick one, that would be it, but, uh, all, all of them, spot on from my perspective.
Very good.
Thank you.
Unless there's other comment, uh, anybody, uh, want to share a priority? Commissioner Powell, you have a priority you want to share?
Well, I didn't see it in the plan, but what about the town of Macon? That should be a high priority. I don't see nothing developed or nothing coming there, uh, I don't see nothing in the plan.
Well, it's, um, it's mentioned as lumped in when we say work with the towns, all towns. And, um, that the all three towns are making Norl Island, Warrenton. But it's not any specific plans for Macon or for Norl Island or for Warrenton, but that's not a specific plan. It just says to work with them, that they are, um.
You mentioned, you mentioned, um, the town of Warrenton Administrator and town of Norl Island Administrator. I didn't see anything about town of Macon Administrator.
The, the town of Macon doesn't have an administrator. We did, we did interview, um, Carl Harris, the mayor in there, and he had lots of good comments.
Okay, okay. All right.
Thank you. Okay, um, in terms of next steps, uh, again, it, any notes that you've made, uh, as we've gone through the day? Now, these note pages that we relied on today are a product of Zoom. It's a product of being remote like this. Uh, if we were together, we would, we would have, uh, used a lot of different methods, but primarily we want to catch as many of your comments and, and questions and bits of advice as we can. So any notes that you think would be valuable, you want to pass along to Vincent? Uh, please do that. We're going to be working, uh, with Vincent and his team, including Charlotte on economic and community development going forward. I know you'll have, you know, conversations, uh, but we hope within, uh, three weeks or so, to put an action plan, we're certainly going to, Vincent can put an action plan in front of you. And that, that action plan, it will be a living document. It's sort of like we were talking about with employee morale. You don't finish it. Uh, actions just, you know, have to, after perpetuate. Uh, so, uh, but back to what, um, Chairman Davis said, the right systems to execute, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to suggest what we've seen work, not only with county government and, and the public sector, but with manufacturing companies, where we've worked with them on their strategic plan. What kind of systems and processes do they employ to make sure that things are executed? So we're going to bring that kind of, uh, methodology to systems and processes. But with that, uh, again, please hand over to Vincent what you, what you would like to, we'll continue working with him. I'll hand it back over to Charles, certainly my thanks, uh, for this meeting. And Charles, would you like to close out our side of it?
Well, thank you all again for allowing us to work with you. It's been, um, a real pleasure. Um, we've, we've all learned a lot and I think, um, um, I think it's, it's a good, good journey. And I think Warren County has, has an exciting future. I mean, it's just, but it's a, it's a challenge. I mean, it's not like, you know, it's, it's, it's got to do some things, but y'all, you all are working together and you've got, I think you've got a good beginning of a good plan here and just got to execute it now. So, um, at least that's what I think, hope. And thank you again for letting us do this. It was really, really quite a treat. And nice to have gotten all of you.
And the committee, I think one of the things you all mentioned was branding Warren County. And I think that's one of the challenges I see we have is, is with the citizens themselves, letting them know what's going on in Warren County, because so many of our citizens just don't understand. And if you ask them what's going on, what's taking place in Warren County, you'd probably have a negative answer. And somehow we have got to let them know what we have in Warren County and just what Warren County is doing for them, so that they'll be more positive in their comments about Warren County.
I, um, I'd like to say that, um, of course, uh, Ms. Baker, I know she's been on quite a few of these things before me, but, uh, this retreat here with you, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Parks has been very, very, uh, informative and helpful to us. And, uh, we're glad that our county manager decided to, uh, partner with you to help us facilitate our views and where we want to go. And, uh, this has been very informative and directional, especially for me. In times past, we've had these things and I'm like, well, why do we even do it? But I can honestly say that, um, as this unfolded, as you, uh, opened this box for us and unpacked these things that I see all over my table here, I can honestly say that I can basically, uh, sign off today feeling good that we took the time out to do this and how to go forward. And, uh, it's, it has been so inspiring that we have a great, um, group of commissioners here that are engaging. Each one of us in our own fashion, um, and, and, and that makes that what makes us such a strong board. And then to do, actually put the ice cream, the topping, the cherry, we got a strong staff that really works well with us and very engaging. And when I say staff, I'm talking about all our employees. And we are doing what's best for Warren County, which, uh, of course says that's what we're doing, what's best for our citizens. So I really appreciate it.
Well, okay, uh, Mr. Manager, I'll turn it back over to you.
Sure, well, thank you, uh, Dan and Charles, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Parks for the facilitation today. Um, and thank you to Chair and the Board. Um, I really do appreciate that you all took the time, were engaged, uh, for the past three and a half hours. Um, I do think that coming out of this, we're going to have, um, the, the most substantive strategic plan document. I do think that coming out of this, we're gonna have the, the most substantive strategic plan document that we've been able to put together over the past few years, so I'm excited about that. You know, we had a meeting with all of our department directors and leadership team on yesterday, and so they are aware, they have been watching you all today, so they can hear your priorities. And then I'm going to engage all of them now to work on these action items. So when we bring that back to you, it will have the full breadth of our team behind it, giving you the action items to help us achieve what you all have identified today. So again, I was just gonna say thank you and great job today.
Thank you again. Everybody stay safe.
Yeah.
Everybody.